Everybody's ready? If so, hello call our regular Board of Education meeting order on Monday, January twenty fifth. Five so six. First order is the please believe in. By the way, this is America to report to send one nation, my God, and this love for justice. Okay. With that, our next order of business is roll from Kirk. You're here, Brian.
Here.
The end.
Yeah.
Howard care. Scott stops, right, it's here. Uh, David, are you?
Yep, here.
And Mr. Redman is not with us tonight. Okay, was the meeting properly notified?
I guess it was, and the meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
Um, David, you can hear us, correct?
Yes, I can. Sorry, I had to find a microphone button.
You cannot hear us.
Can't hear me, raise your hand.
No, I'll be told, put it in the chat, but.
But can you chat to them or not?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we. Ready, yeah.
I don't know what to do about that, as long as Chad knows.
Okay, uh, then we will move on to the next item, which is, uh, public comment. Do we have any public comments at this time? Anybody online? They're hearing none, uh, we move on. The next item is highlight on youth, and I don't believe we have anything scheduled for tonight. Next item on the agenda is comments by board members and superintendent, uh, start off with the report on the virtual ASB State Education Convention. Tim, you?
I did not watch anything live, but I did sign up, so I have the ability to go back and watch some of them, uh, at my convenience.
Okay, um, I did attend last week, and it's an interesting experience, uh, doing, uh, things virtually rather than in person. I think, uh, things that I missed most were the, uh, social interactions with the other board members. Uh, I did attend a couple of sessions, uh, it was like the flavor of the conference revolved around equity, especially racial equity education. And that kind of filtered through the, uh, a lot of the talks went through, especially with, uh, things on student achievement. Other things, uh, it was an interesting afternoon, a long afternoon in the delegate committee. We only had ten resolutions to consider, and it took us nearly three and a half hours to do it.
We thank you for your service.
Yeah. It was brutal. Uh, as I said, uh, with the racial equity going on, there seemed to be effort, especially with a lot of the cities, to eliminate, uh, SROs or school resource officers, both in funding and, uh, you know, presence. And it was kind of miffed by that, uh, because of the fact that ten years ago, they were trying to get those very people within their school buildings help with the, the safety of students, and now it's buggered. A little disappointed in that, uh, there were some changes that went through of the ten, ten resolutions. I guess the first one that came out was, uh, the one on the one set sales tax for school infrastructure, technology, and tax relief. Uh, just highlight on that, if that were to be passed by the state legislature, they're estimating it would result in about thirteen hundred and twenty-six dollars per student after two feet of district. Then I went through the R and enrollment, uh, one that I found interesting that we probably didn't even know existed is there's a nineteen eighty-nine Wisconsin Act thirty-one dealt with instruction on indigenous tribes. Now, this has been a important a law since nineteen eighty-nine, in which we are supposed to be teaching all indigenous peoples of Wisconsin and providing curriculum. I was unaware of it, but, uh, I can only assume that we were doing it, but I'm not sure of what level. So, that came up, that, uh, there's they were looking for DPI to provide instructional leadership in, in this area. I went to a talk later regarding to, uh, instruction in indigenous peoples curriculum, and there are a lot of resources out there available. We had a teacher who was, uh, well, give away, uh, who teaches in the Superior School District that, uh, provided the talk and provided a lot of information as far as curriculum and books that are available. Um, and then the last one, uh, was resolution of, of the other highlights, uh, resolution, uh, or superintendent evaluations. Presently, they are evaluations for superintendent are public, open records, and the proper, uh, document request, uh, what we're looking for is all, for the most part, other such as principals and teachers. Building, building administrators are exempt from that, so their their evaluations are considered confidential. However, administrators that are district-wide, including the superintendent, uh, their value agents are subject to the open meet, open records request are not considered confidential. Uh, we didn't feel that was fair, so they're gonna push the state level to try and have that, uh, put in there. I'm not sure where, where that will fall.
Wait to move the superintendent to also being exempt from the record, or to move the rest to open?
No, move them all to confidential. Okay, and with that, other than that, I went to a couple of, they had lobbies and which, uh, you could talk to colleagues or network with other people, uh, open one-to-one situation. And those I thought were interesting, uh, I found that a lot of us are having the same issue. Probably, uh, a lot, a lot of the ones especially around here are all one in-person classes, so with that. Other than that, uh, for those that are registered at the conference, I guess these talks can't be available online for the rest of the year. I don't know what I need to say on, on that, I don't know if there's any questions by anybody. Hoping I know face to face and the one.
For those of you that are in line, can you hear me better when I speak up like this? Just need to talk louder? Or should we switch microphones? Okay, they say yes, you just need to come.
Okay. Are there any questions with regards to the convention, then? Otherwise, we'll move on to the, uh, January second, uh, Friday Student Membership Count. It was held on January eighth.
Okay, um, as all of you are aware, you know, we have a third Friday in September official count, and then there's also a second Friday in January Student Official Count. I would give high praise to all, uh, secretaries and district office personnel that, um, took part in the count. It's very detailed, you can imagine, you literally have to go through every student to make sure it's accurate. I mean, one thousand six hundred and seventy-five basically times, and, uh, working together, um, it's always accurate. So we, uh, the official count were up three, uh, as compared to September, one thousand six hundred and seventy-five. So thank you to all the ladies involved in that.
And just 'cause I don't know, is that for financial purposes?
Correct.
I understand.
And beyond that, it's for planning purposes of staff.
Okay, uh, then, uh, comments that I wanted to make in addition to what is listed, uh, I think most, most are aware of, uh, the passing of Tim Scott last week. Tim was a significant member in our community, and he, in my opinion, was one of the driving forces for our German program at the middle school level, and, uh, also kept it running at the high school level. His, uh, box on the Holocaust riveting. I think that provided a, a, a great educational opportunity for, uh, middle schoolers and anybody he did the presentation to. Uh, I, I so he is also was heavily involved in scouting, and that was, uh, part of, uh, his involvement with, with some of the youth in our, uh, community. Scouting's near and dear to my heart also. Um, but with that, uh, I wish, uh, my condolences, uh, to Tim's family. And I'd like to recognize him for the, uh, good works that he did both for the school district and the community over the years, and, uh, he will be missed, so. I would like to pass that on to the community.
I worked with him in Bachman for two years, and he was a hell of a liar, and he was just a damn good person. He was just a good person.
I had the fortune of, you know, getting tutored by him, you know, in German lessons, we were each, uh, uh, I think for over two years, uh, Wednesday afternoons, and, um, we talked a lot of German, but we also just talked a lot about life, um, he's, like you said, really neat person, very, uh, unique and experiences and the stories he had, you know, he's, I mean, he's just a really neat man, and obviously, he talked, you know, German to kids, they, he just made so many connections, kids connected to him, loved listening to Scotty, there's a lot who call him, and I know he's very involved in the church, uh, youth religious education and scouting, and then again, as an educator, and I, I didn't know until this week that he was a talented musician, played guitar. Here we, I mean, for two years, I never talked about playing guitars, you could have jammed together too, that's one of my regrets, but he will definitely be missed, and but where, um, he spoke, he did that Holocaust presentation, I think, about forty times per year to different schools, and they've always invited him back. It really bummed him out, COVID, because he couldn't do that, and he was really bummed out this past ten months. He stopped in the office here just before Christmas. Um, shared his German chocolate, that chocolate he always had from, from, uh, Aldi's or Germany, but, um, yeah, uh, so I'm in the process of finding recordings of his presentation, so that his legacy can continue. Specifically, you know, at least for, for the SCC kids, and I'm hopeful other schools will continuously show his video, it won't be as impactful, but anybody that's seen it is, uh, will never forget his message.
And I guess I, one other note for us is Mr. Redman, he's not with us tonight, and the reason is, Jim has been pretty seriously ill for the last two, three weeks. He underwent surgery on Friday, and he is recovering. Running speedy recovery, but he can read and support take here. Okay.
Hi, I'm one on a little lighter, I guess. This last Friday, I had a couple of meetings canceled in, uh, uh, middle school. Almost here, they were talking about the good things they were doing on Friday, so I popped in um, for about an hour, and they were doing a team building event, so had a chance to watch and observe that, and it was, it was very good, so the staff was up, like, engaged. Um, really good team building event, and, uh, it was just good to see the, the staff working together and everything like that, so. I don't know, it was, it was worth popping in just to see how things are going and everything like that, so. I don't have to get a chance, it's, it's, it's inter, I mean, it's, feels odd without having the, the kids there, right? I mean, the schools just feels empty. Um, but they were talking about all the different collaboration events they were doing in the morning, and everything that was happening, and working between groups, and everything like that, and then did that team building event all before noon. Um, so they are making the most of it, so just want to report back to everybody on that that I had a chance to pop in.
Are there any other board members?
Yeah, Howard, I just wanted to mention, um, this last week, on one of the local social media sites, somebody was inquiring about, uh, minutes um, for our meetings. Um, I gave as much education as I could, I encouraged them to actually attend the meetings online. I explained that there was, uh, a link to the Google Meet. Um, hopefully, some of them are tuned in, but, um, Tim, I'm hoping you or somebody in the district office can just kind of explain why the meeting minutes are not posted, let's say, the following business day after a meeting, and what goes into that. Uh, I know that they're not posted right away, and there is a procedure and a reason for that, but I'm hoping some of those people have tuned in, and maybe you can explain it.
Maybe I can explain it, David.
Sure.
Usually, uh, these are we put a hard copy of the minutes, uh, together, and those usually have to be transcribed. And so, we try and get those out as soon as we can, and most of the minutes are not published until they've been formally approved by the board. So, uh, we can have unapproved minutes that go to board members, but the unapproved minutes are not, I don't believe, available to the general public until after they have been formally approved by the board. But, uh, the minutes for the meeting should be available, uh, for the previous month. Posted on both, uh, both online, and they should be in the Hudson Star server, and that is a subject that we will be, uh, discussing later in the meeting regards to the meeting minutes, so.
That was one thing that I had mentioned also, was that, uh, you know, the unfortunately, it was brought up, um, that, you know, there was the possibility of trying to hide something, and I assured them there was nothing being hidden, the meetings are completely open, uh, but that there was a process that the minutes had to go through, um, you know, before they're actually put out there for the public.
So, I am hoping that answers questions, uh, I don't know if there are any other, uh, questions, but, uh, usually, uh, Pam or Michaela will, uh, transcribe those, uh, meeting minutes as soon as they can, usually within a week, and usually they'll forward them to me for proofreading, and then they are sent the, uh, board members as unapproved minutes, and, uh, so they can read those. And if they have any additions, corrections, those are dealt with at the next regular, uh, the next board meeting.
I think that's very standard procedure, you know, you don't tell us unapproved minutes. I mean, for any board, that, you know, that would be very standard. I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think that's unique to us.
Nope, I don't think so. I think that describes the process very well.
Our meetings are taped, the regular monthly meeting is taped and online, available.
Yep, I did mention that as well, that it was the local cable access, and that they're also on the, uh, school's YouTube channel. Um, I laid out as much information as I had, but I did encourage the people to reach out, uh, to the district office. I told them that, you know, people in the district office are doing this full-time, uh, where we as board members are doing it part-time, so, uh, the experts were in the district office, so I encouraged them to reach out.
Yeah, we're not in local cable access anymore, but yes, on YouTube. As far as the timeline on YouTube, Pam, would, would you be able to speak to that, or, or anything else that we just talked about? Do you want to end? Here she hears. Well, her mute's off.
Hi.
Oh. You just spoke on your computer.
I had to put on my other computer without the speakers.
Oh.
Um, as far as the minutes, yeah, Howard, you explained it pretty, um, clearly. I do put the, um, unapproved minutes in the newspaper as soon as we can, and I make a notation there, unapproved.
And the video is available how soon after the meeting typically?
Um, it takes a little bit, because I do listen to it as I'm reading the minutes to make sure that there isn't anything, you know, a student's name mentioned or something like that, so.
And then the video is posted to the YouTube channel? Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, I mean, they, like you reminded them, David, I mean, they are open meetings, literally, I mean, anybody with internet access in the world would be viewing this meeting right now, and normally, pre-COVID, you know, anybody could view it and be here in person, we're just encouraging people to view remotely because of COVID.
Yep, I did mention that to them as well. Um, there was one individual who had said they had trouble, uh, connecting for quite some time, they felt like they missed a lot of the meeting. Um, you know, I, I told them, there's, there's so many variables between their setup and the school's setup and the internet that it's really difficult to narrow down exactly what went wrong, but uh, I did let them know that, you know, i- if they wanted to reach out to the district office, somebody could probably put them in touch with Chad. He might have some ideas of things they could look at or try. Um, I said, we've got to bang up IT staff at SCC, and we might be able to figure something out, whether it's on our end or their end, or at least point them in the right direction.
Okay, are there any other comments from board members, or, uh, let's see, this is not, this thing. Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda. We have, uh, Sarah Coop of Clifton, Larson, Allen, present our annual school report. So, Sarah?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I get a turn my monitor here, so um, just kind of summarizing the various items from the audit. Um, as always, it goes really well, the staff does a good job. Um, we had issued, uh, unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can get. Um, we did have an emphasis of matter opinion this year, or comment in the opinion this year, and that was just because of the new GAZB eighty-eight standard for, um, the way that we had to report debt in the financials. It didn't change anything, there is just a little bit more added, um, information in the financials for that, so. Uh, the management letter, uh, we just had the one finding with, uh, limited segregation of duties, which is, uh, common for m- most of our clients, and kind of a hard thing to get rid of. Uh, this year, you guys did have to have a single audit, because you had, uh, funding over seven hundred and fifty thousand, so that just requires a little bit more, um, work on our, and additional testing. And we also have to submit a data collection form, which I think has been all done and submitted to the federal's government, or, um, let's see. Then we have item number two is we talk about the general fund, and that's the main operating account of the district, and it does combine Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven together. Um, I think in the financials further, you'll have a summary of Fund Ten, and then one of Fund Twenty-seven, and then there's the combining one, so this here on your handout there that you guys should have is the combination of Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-seven. Um, we had if you look, you can see where your, uh, we have prepaid this year, which you didn't have yet last year, some years you have it, some years you don't, it's just depending on the, the timing. Um, let's see, and this year, then you show a non-spendable, which ties to the amount of your prepaid expenses. Just means that it's not, there are district funds that aren't available to be spent, because they're already obligated somewhere else. And then you also had a restricted fund balance this year, uh, eighty-one dollars, and I believe that's related to the excess of the common school funds that was rema- remaining, and we have the unassigned fund balance there, those are funds that are available to the, to be used, um, for the bit, for the district, there isn't any restrictions with that. Um, what happened there? And then we also do a calculation on the bottom for the unassigned fund balances to the general fund expenditures, and you're at sixteen point nine percent, I believe that the fund balance policy for the district is between seventeen and nineteen percent of the, um, fiscal expenses, so um, you're just right on the, I think it came out to be, yeah, sixteen point nine, so you're right there on the right below your, um, fund balance policy there, but. Um, okay, then, on the next page, we have item number three, which is your special revenue funds uh, with the district, um, they're restricted for certain specific purposes. Um, your education trust, um, you'll see from the last year, the fund balance had increased, and that's related to the GAZB eighty-four standard, um, DPI. It's like you can no longer have your Fund Sixty accounts, they had to meet certain criteria, so they had to be brought into Fund Ten or Fund Twenty-One, so these were brought into Fund Twenty-One, so that's why you see that increase large increase there in your fund balance. And then you have your food service and your community services fund balance there. Uh, let's see, the debt service fund, um, you had your fund balance there, um, you didn't issue any debt during two thousand nineteen twenty, but we did have a debt defeesence, so that just, um, took, I think, I made a note here, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand of, um, the bonds were placed in an irrevocable trust fund to be used to provide for future debt service payments. Um, and that was related to your April eighteenth, two thousand and twelve, um, GO bonds. Um, then you have your capital projects funds, uh, you didn't have any construction projects this year, because you were done with that last year, and then your capital improvement fund is your Fund Forty-Nine, where you could set funds aside to be, they sat there for five years, I think they're available to you now, but you had to come up with the long-range capital plan, uh, what you were gonna use those for. Um, you haven't really, I think you're just incurring interest over the years since you established that, but it is available now to where you could start spending that down. We have your long-term obligations, just a summary of those between your bonds and your GO notes. And you could see, um, you know, the difference in your bond payments from nineteen to twenty, just 'cause you paid off um, major principal and payments there. Um, you do have the capital lease, which I think is gonna need to be done in two thousand and twenty-one, if I recall correctly. Um, then you have the WRS pension. Then you have the WRS pension liability asset. So this year, it kind of fluctuates every year. This year it's an asset and that, um, just something that we have to do to record it. I don't, it's not on the district books per se. It's conversion that we have to do, um, related to the WRS pension plan. And it's just your proportionate share of the asset right now. And then your OPEB liability, along with your supplemental pension benefits there. And then we do a calculation on the equalized value. So we get those reports, you'll see the equalized value there. And then it's, uh, your obligation debt limit. Let's see. It measures the GO debt as a percentage of your debt limitation. And then that can change based on you pay more debt, so you have more funds available to you to meet that limit. Like I said, everything, the whole, the audit went well. I don't know if you guys have any other questions or?
Are there any questions by any board members at this point? Looks pretty straightforward, Sarah, so.
Yeah, you didn't have a lot of changes, so, yeah.
Good. I guess if any other ques, no other questions, then, uh, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, Sarah. I just have a comment. I again want to recognize Jen and everybody involved with budget and a successful audit. I think, I know it goes well every year, but you know, um, although they make it look easy and flawless, it's not as easy to be flawless. So just want to commend everyone involved, Jen and her team for another outstanding audit. Good job. Thank you.
Good. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the status update on our LED project, lighting project that we approved last October. Ryan, you with us?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Great. Uh, the, the name of the company is NCLED. And they, uh, they started in mid-December at the middle school. Uh, they've completed most of that. They've got just a few things left to do there. This is all LED lighting now. All the fluorescents will be gone. Saving a, a whole lot of money and, uh, cost in recycling of the fluorescent bulbs. So I'm excited for that. So the middle school is just about done. Few things left there. Uh, just, uh, check up on a light in a gym there. Isn't responding. When you walk into the gym, it isn't lighting. Few other miscellaneous. District office, they've been there. That's just about done also. There's canopy lights outside of the outside doors that are, uh, need to be replaced yet. And they're looking for fixtures to, to put in those areas. There's two of them. The bus garage, uh, they are done with that at the, uh, big bus barn. And the mechanic side where Brian's shop is. The tin shed though, uh, they've got to put high bay lights in there, in there. They've not gotten to that yet. There's eight lights going to be put in there. That should be much brighter by the time it's done. So, uh, that will be done. They have not started at all at the, uh, elementary yet. But at the high school, they have about eighty, eighty-five percent of that done. There are still some areas left to go there. I know the office area is one of them. Some of the shop areas I think are left. They're waiting for more flat panels to come in to finish up. And, uh, it, it's really looking good where they have been so far. And, um, they're, they're just working at night. They start at three, four o'clock in the afternoon. They go to two to three o'clock in the morning. And, um, have been doing pretty well. Cleanup could be a little bit better, but, uh, we're, we're there the next morning to help make sure it's ready for school. Like I say, the elementary has not been started yet. Looking forward to them to get there within the next couple of weeks. After they get done with, uh, the stuff at, uh, all of the buildings at Hammond. I think it's, uh, important that they get Hammond taken care of. All the middle school, high school, bus garage and, uh, district office before they come to Robertson, get started at the elementary. There's no reason to leave that stuff hanging out there. The elementary will have all new lights too. Uh, I'm excited to get those new lights put in the, to two new gyms and cafeteria. That's going to make a, a world of difference when that gets done. And there's, um, the, the new flat panels that are going in. If they're not getting just bulbs, uh, they are very nice. I, I really like them. The, um, the flat panels more look like a skylight than anything, I think. They have a little bit of trouble with some of the lighting in the classrooms as far as inboard, outboard lighting. Some of the rooms have the ability to have two lights on in a three-light fixture or one light on in a three-light fixture. And, uh, so they're adapting to some of that as, as they go through the classrooms. Teachers, uh, just have to adapt to that is the wiring is different. With a flat, straight panel, there's no inboard, outboard lighting no more, so. And that's all I've got on it. I, I've not really asked the principals for their opinion on what they've thought so far. Pete Chance, um, what do you think of what you've seen so far?
For the most part, Pete here, um, I really love how it's brightened up our gyms and some of our common areas. We do have some teachers, it's kind of like, um, real bright for them. And I think like Brad Hoser does, he's only got the one switch. So Gary's working with him on that. So there's some little things we have to do. But overall, it's a very positive thing in regards to, um, brightening up some of the areas that really needed to get brighter. And we have some teachers getting some covers for their lights, just to tone it down a little bit in our, our sped areas. Otherwise, very happy.
And I, and I think probably those are the fixtures, Pete, that they, uh, had the inboard, outboard lighting on. And now they don't have a choice on that, I, I would assume.
Yes, you're right, sir.
Uh, that's, that's all I really have. It's, it's really going along well. There are a few issues with them getting, uh, the materials, the, um, the special lighting for some of the fixtures are not here yet. But they, they're moving along as fast as they can and, uh, are doing a, doing a terrific job.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, are there any questions for the board with regards to the project? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our financial report.
The bank account balances as of the end of two thousand and twenty, twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Citizen State Bank checking, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, twenty-one cents. Citizen State Money Market, one million, twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars, forty-five cents. Citizens Money Market Fund, forty-six, fifty-three dollars, five cents. Citizens Money Market Suicide Redemption Fund, sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. For total bank account balances of one point, one, one million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, forty cents.
Move to accept as presented.
Motion, David, do we have a second? Second, Kirk. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is consideration of our consent agenda, which consists of approval of our meeting minutes for our December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting. Our board learning meeting of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Approval of the my, my monthly bills for January of two thousand and twenty-one. Approval of resignations and retirements and de-salvo. I have a full-time, uh, third grade teacher. Approval of appointments and contract modifications of Scott Newell, our five-and-a-half-hour grown custodian. Katrina Heverd, an eight-hour elementary general education paraprofessional. Patrick Flandrick, our full-time head girls soccer coach. Sarah Penel, seven-and-a-half-hour elementary, uh, special education paraprofessional. And approval of the contract, uh, the curriculum modification request for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual ed courses, which consist of three part-time and fifteen full-time for a total of eighteen. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, Scott, second, Deanne. Approve the, um, consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We'll make one, uh, comment that, uh, Anne has been with us for many years. And, uh, I would like to wish her well and her future endeavors and her retirement, as she proceeds to move on after the end of this academic school year.
Thank you, Anne.
So, thank you. Thank you for your many years of dedicated service on behalf of St. Clair Central School, so. Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is our student enrollment update.
Start with, uh, the number of students in seats. Uh, one oh five from last month, one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two. Uh, tribute that to the, uh, students switching back from virtual learning to in-person. Our charter school, uh, is at two hundred and eighty students. Our free introduced lunch rate over the last few years has always been pretty steady between twenty and twenty-two percent. Currently at twenty-two point four-three percent free introduced lunch meals. And lastly, just point out our open enrollment in versus out. Three hundred and eighty-three in, one hundred and twenty-nine out. And, uh, we'd also be talking a little more in-depth with open enrollment in, um, later on in our agenda.
Any questions or comments with regards to the, uh, student enrollment updates? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item, which is our key work, school board, which is our student staff, the community recognition. Ryan?
Grace Manzel. Grace, congratulations on your effort during this fall's trap season, taking second in the conference and seven in the state is an awesome accomplishment. Brock Thorson. Brock, great work with your second place finish in conference and fourteenth place in state during the fall trap season. Keep up the great work. Tammy Simonson and the food service staff, thank you Tammy and your staff for your assistance for the for a purpose. With your help, we were able to put together and deliver over a hundred and fifty Christmas and Thanksgiving meals for families and people in need. John Hemmman, thank you John for promoting community service and all that you do to lead and assist with for a purpose. You've done great things to assist others in and outside of our community. Your last effort orchestrating the free Christmas and Thanksgiving meals is very appreciated. Thank you to all.
Thank you for, um, all those who were recognized, uh, with their efforts. And thank you to those that, uh, submitted the names, uh, so those people can be properly recognized, so. Keep up the good work and, uh, continue to submit those names. And to find out about them, so. Okay. Or anything else on that item? Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is a consideration of approval. An initial resolution to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty million dollars. This amount is eliminated, subject to change at this meeting. Twenty-three million, so. So it has to do.
Thomas Trindus.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Tom, are you online, Mr. Greg?
You're on mute, Tom.
All right. Yes, I am here.
Now, it's my understanding, Tom, that, uh, we can change this, uh, resolution, uh, to cover items that we deem that, that can be changed within the parameters that we've established. You're adding or subtracting items from that resolution?
That's, that's correct. The resolution that I drafted here, attempted to, um, include really all of the different purposes that the board was looking at, for this, uh, potential bond issue. Realizing that, uh, some of those purposes, uh, might be eliminated, uh, by the board to get to your target goals for overall dollar, dollar amount of the borrowing and, uh, also hitting certain, um, tax impact targets. So the idea was that, um, the board could consider, um, the resolution, look at the projects, um, that they, uh, want to include. And if that would require eliminating some of these, um, projects under the purpose language in the initial resolution, then we would go ahead and do that based on what the board decides here tonight.
And I guess the last question that I have for you, Tom, is statutory timeline. We have to have that resolution adopted and signed. Is that?
That, that, yes, that's correct. The, um, statutory requirement to be able to get on to the ballot for the April sixth election is to submit the ballot questions, um, in this case to the county clerk, um, at least seventy days in advance of the referendum date. That seventy days is tomorrow, the twenty-sixth. So, uh, that is the deadline for submitting the ballot questions to the county clerk in order to get on the ballot for the April sixth, uh, election.
Okay, are there any other questions for Tom at this time? I guess the rest of the resolution is presented. What we need to do. And I think Brian is, Brian Dillard is also online?
Hi, Howard, yes, I am online.
Okay. I guess the question, the other questions that we'll have may pop up as, uh, the financial impact of, uh, some of the things we're considering. And you would be available for questions to answer on that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, with that, I'll open it up to the board is to, uh, I know some of you were not able to attend, uh, last Monday's meeting. And, uh, what was being discussed, considered and options that might be available if we had to do something, uh, some sort of blend. The feeling that I got talking to the committee was that a hundred and ten percent compensation was a bridge too far. They believe, uh, our teachers should be paid at least a hundred percent. At most, most of the committee thought that, uh, a hundred and five percent compensation was a reasonable request. Um, as far as.
Just to clear, it's a hundred and five percent, um.
Targeted, the twelve targeted.
The twelve, okay, that's what I'm saying, I think that that's an important point.
Yeah.
Our twelve targeted districts.
Yeah.
Okay. That does not necessarily speak to this part of the resolution. So. The other part of the resolution, which has to do with this, which is the facilities question. The feeling was, we had on the table, we had a four K addition to the elementary school. We had a career tech ed addition on to the high school. We discussed parking lots. We discussed, uh, HVAC upgrades. We discussed, uh, improvements to the athletic field. We had several long discussions with that. And it got into the, so we all felt that, you know, a lot of this stuff was needs. We got into the question of wants and needs. The feeling was that the two things that popped up as needs were, number one would be the preferred tech ed addition on the high school. And, um, the four K additions to the elementary school. The. The health and parking situation is not necessarily good, but, you know, we didn't want to deal with right now. And, um, the thing on the athletics is that at this time, um, we've got more wants and we've got more available. So, I think the things that they're looking at are the addition on the high school and the additions on the four K. So. Um. One of the things that I thought that we might want, if we felt was appropriate is including HVAC upgrades and controls. Necessary area handling things that we need to now upgrade and update it. Maybe our, uh, getting employed, necessary. I would like to see that in- included in this, but that's up to the board and that's pretty much discussed at the meeting. And when I'm gonna open it up to the floor. The board members here and get your opinions on this. Something that we want to move forward with, and if so, uh, what are the parameters we want to operate on?
One of the questions I would have is if we did, uh, CTE and, uh, uh, four K. So the, the whole plan was comprehensive and the parking and driveways, would they need to be altered if we did the plans that are, that are being included, so would that be a powerful budget number that we'd have to include?
Yeah, let, maybe, I'll, uh, follow up and, uh, provide some more information. So let me, I'll share my screen so everyone see what we're referring to here. So Joe Donovan summarized the notes, um, but asked, again, the facilities task force, I think there are only, um, fifteen surveys that were actually completed, but they prioritized. They asked the facilities task force to rank these, uh, four things in order. Didn't have HVAC on there. But, um, and then his orders, CTE, four K, parking and traffic flow, and fourth was, uh, um, athletic field upgrades. And, um, you know, the, the, he quotes it here, the school board, here was the recommendation, the school board should move forward with the referendum. Number one, the school should move forward to address the district's facility needs. And it should do so in a way that addresses both the needs of the district and the financial situation of the community. Task force also recommends the board that as it considers a facilities-related referendum, it should consider the prioritized list of the task force created. So then, you know, right now for this project, or this portion of, uh, the resolution, or this resolution, you know, we're starting with twenty million dollars. I think, obviously, uh, we know that, uh, considering the district's financial situation and the community's tax impact, it's important to know what that tax impact is. So for twenty million dollars, um, Brian, please confirm, it's a forty-nine cent, uh, tax impact increase over existing debt, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I have twenty million dollars, and then for every million that we would go over that, it is four to five cents per million increase, is that correct?
Correct, that, um, that is the estimate per million, however, once you give me a, you know, total, I can look at, at the assumptions and how we're repaying to see if I can smooth that out any differently. But as in rough, uh, number, rough, roughly for four to five cents.
Okay. And then I know the, the next, um, resolution is separate, but I think the board's considering both together, right? The total, so the other one is fifty cents at a hundred and five percent of the budget mark. So that's fifty cents, that's forty-nine and twenty-three, it's a ninety-nine cent increase. And for every million over, it's about four to five cents.
In X, B, or K, what's a ninety-nine cent increase? And that's, that's real number that matters, what does that mean?
Yep, on your property taxes for every one thousand dollars of property value. Increase over existing.
So ninety-nine, ninety-nine dollars for every other dollar.
With that, and, and just what I'm understanding, that is A, is the resolution for A just for the facilities and and resolution B is for, um, salaries?
Right, that sounds clear. Yep. So, speaking of facilities, and then, um, Sarah and Craig are on site logic, can you examine this? I wanna, um, share right out of separate projects in kind of the, the range, right? It's working best with based on what he knows and best models now. So, the, uh, facilities task force, um, recommend that we be for the elementary. Uh, four K addition, so it'd be wise to take the high-end, right, budget, so that'd be five million there. But there is a recent development, uh, last Monday, where there is an option, and I say it's just an option, of purchasing properties adjacent. Um, um, far from certain very initial, but, um, we asked, us Craig and his team at Site Logic to, to work off an estimate based on, uh, option C. Uh, near the existing playground. Um, and, uh, I can show that here. It'd be in this area here, coming off of, uh, this hallway by the, kind of the kindergarten wing. So that's option C, would have separate parking in here, uh, drop-off sidewalks connected to the front, et cetera. Again, I don't want to spend too much time on that, because it's, it's just a very preliminary discussion and option, but that one is, uh, four point four million. But, uh, for.
And this, so that estimate includes price to purchase property and, and the new driveway? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Uh, the, I don't know, Craig, if you included the purchase price of the property in that or not?
Uh, I use the fair market value that you gave us the other day. But yes, it is included in there.
So. Let's do a roadmap, five million for that. And then, um, again, there are options, uh, um, and there always can be an option C for hands, right?
Can we go back to? Sure, to option B, and I just want to see what the so there's revised entry to the gym, you have a picture of option B?
Um. Do you have that handy, Craig, that you could share? I'm gonna have it emailed.
And if not a picture, is there parking lot disruption that has to be recouped with that option that is or isn't included? I don't see parking lot included in that.
Uh, parking lot adjustments are included in any of those options, so any place where we had to move or relocate or add parking to accommodate, uh, those are included in those numbers.
Thank you.
But the buses and everything is of the gym access, that's perfect, uh, C. Very solid option. Especially locating next to the next grade level, right, keeping that like, like this natural flow of the whole building. So it like feels like it would be part of the natural design of the building as opposed to like bolted onto the back of it. You know, it's just, uh, when you said that to me, you know, I was like, okay.
Option, option C, that I asked for, an option C on the south side of the building. Uh, to see what, if we could save any costs. Uh, they came back with the, um, things that I liked about it is A, it was just off the kindergarten wing. B, how we can use our existing property. C, we're putting a playground back in an existing playground where we already have security, so. Those are the things that I, I liked about that. And the other thing is it did not disrupt, uh, the busing. So we, uh, spent a lot of time long and hard to develop that, so we didn't have parents crossing in the traffic. And I have students running around to get hit with something, so we can keep that separate. So, does not necessarily add any parking, additional parking at the elementary school with that option.
And big picture on the four K, was that just to get them out of the off-site buildings and into the building? Is that a big reason for that?
Yes.
And is there some reason that that's vitally important?
Yeah, mostly for the shared services, all the services that are provided in the elementary school that they don't have access to. And then, of course, safety and security and.
I don't know what that is, a shared service that they don't.
V O T, P T, um, you know, fight, you know, gyms. Lunch, all the, the sort of gyms, but yeah, play, dedicated playground and.
Even access to paras and subs and, and, uh, supervision, onsite supervision by administration.
Anything else with, uh, four K? With CTE, um, option A was the preferred option by facilities task force. But again, um, lots of moving parts and, um, there, you know, there could always be an option C even, uh, as it started to be discussed as recently as, this past week, but um, again, for tonight's purpose, we're really trying to find a budget, right, is the main thing, and then work out the details. What's gonna go on those boxes and where those boxes go, um, at a later date. But, uh, the latest information is option A, facilities task force, preferred for that.
But that's twenty million right there.
Correct.
Right, I mean, it's just those two.
Correct.
Right, twenty million.
Yep.
And I, I guess if I stated my, my preferences, one of my concerns with option B at the high school is that we're spending a lot of money to put an addition on, and we may not have adequate space, the very thing that we're trying to provide space for, which is additional CTE space. And, so we're talking, what was it, twenty-five thousand, twenty-two thousand square foot addition, I believe. On, yeah, and then we add in the space we already have. And the total of the space that we're adding to our existing, uh, space is still not as much as we would be offering of option A. And we're over, we're over a lot of students that wanted, uh, to take classes and there's not adequate, uh, space in the budget, not adequate, but, uh, space.
Craig, could you talk about the square footage of option A and B, please, like we talked about this morning?
Sure, yeah, uh, option A, uh, is thirty-six thousand square feet of new addition. Um, all CTE dedicated, so everything that you see in that list would all be in one addition. Uh, option B is a little bit more of a mix, so I, it, actually, let me go back for one more thing on option A. Uh, the existing space that is currently CTE shops, et cetera, uh, the culinary arts space, that would, uh, be renovated into additional general classroom space. So that's included in this, in this cost. Option B, uh, has a smaller CTE addition, so basically focusing on just the shops. Uh, and then it starts to take advantage of the existing, um, CTE space for some of those, uh, the, the functions of like the culinary, uh, business. So not everything is in new space, a lot of it goes into renovated space. So you, you end up with a balance of less additional net gain as far as classroom space. Uh, but you have approximately the same amount of CTE space that's been touched, either new or renovated.
How much does it cost to put a new softball field? What's your cost estimates for relocating a softball field?
Uh, let's see, I can I have raw numbers, and I have like the soft cost on top of it, but it's, um, mid-two-fifties to, to three hundred thousand.
Uh, another question for you, Craig, is, um, budgets with regards to furniture fixtures and equipment.
So that's something that.
In these, is that in addition to?
That would be in addition to, so that would be, that would be something that would have to be basically programmed out with the, with the shop teachers, with the, with the culinary staff. Just to basically narrow down what exactly they would want from those, for those programs.
And do we have a typical, uh, percentage of the facilities budget that is dedicated to the F F and A?
Uh, Sarah, do you have a, you have a rule of thumb that?
Twenty percent?
I would say fifteen to twenty percent, this is, Sarah, it's a good range. Um, it varies whether it's a general classroom and it's gonna be higher if it's, um, more costly with a, um, a CTE lab space, for instance.
So the twenty million was forty-nine cents?
Yeah.
And then what was it gonna be in addition for the, the staffing increase?
Fifty.
Fifty, so that, okay, so that's where we get the ninety-nine cents.
Yep.
Okay.
And then for every, for every additional million for this project after the salary, which is four to five cents.
Right.
Right, so.
So, so do we need to add that fifteen, um, to what we're considering for a budgetary, or is that? It would be wise, um, because I, yeah, that's, I mean, generally anybody can chip in here, but, yeah, it would be wise to do that, because I don't know where it's gonna come out of the budget.
Right.
It's a big number, yeah.
Right, and the next question that I would have on that is if we're adding thirty-six thousand square feet and more programming, we have to add staff. And is that an operational, a permanent operational number that we need to consider?
Yeah, and if we got to that point, I thought we could work that into the hundred and five percent budget. You know, that's, I, I think that always, at least in my.
Not in the current number, that, that's, oh, that's in the hundred and five percent budget, right?
Right. Yeah, so that, let's say you take two that. That, or you take, let's say, two percent of that and add staff. You know, it's, I know the focus of a lot of people say, oh, that's all salary, all salary. Well, I always say, well, we gotta be considerate of staffing additions or programming additions with.
Right, and the language in the resolution speaks to that, that it's not, it's, and other staffing needs.
Correct.
But the number has to include everything that needs to be included in, you know, so.
I was like, you see the number and the wording within the resolution are, but main objectives tonight.
But right now, we can pick out we're asking, we're asked just to pick out the dollar amount? And we don't have to come up with the details, or we have to come up with the broad, brush.
And that's why Tom is on, um, Tom can speak to the legality of what, you know, needs to be. And that's why Tom is on, um, Tom can speak to the legality of what, you know, needs to be, it needs to be, um, written in here to a degree, but it doesn't, you know, but it doesn't have to be one color tile, you know, that specific. Tom, uh, would you mind speaking to Deanna's question? You heard it?
Uh, could you repeat that question? I didn't quite hear all of it.
It, I, I think I'm good. I think I understand. I'm just trying to figure out what were, what were asked.
I think the question still needs to be answered, even if you're, even if you're good, because it's for the whole population that, that wants to hear that answer. So the question is, how specific does the wording have to be? Right, is that right? Deanna, what you were basically saying.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to conceptualize.
Are we deciding a dollar value or are we deciding more or less project scope with a dollar value?
Right, I didn't know if, if we could just say twenty million dollars and then we'll figure out what, whether it's one A, two B, five C later. Or whether we need to at least determine whether it's one A and one B.
You don't determine that, we do determine, so the wording in this resolution, like it's, you know.
And why does it have those, they don't?
Yeah, if I, if, if I can address that, um, uh, the wording of the resolution, uh, at least our approach to it is to, um, uh, be somewhat general in character, but also capturing sort of the essence of what you're doing. And I was going to make the point earlier when you were going through the different options. Um, in drafting the language, I don't pay particular attention to the options necessarily. Uh, the idea is that the language is general enough to capture what you want to do in any of those options that you're looking at. Um, now you get into some situations where I think one option has, you know, relocating the softball field. Now, that's peculiar to that option, and if you selected that option, you know, we'd want to put that kind of language in there. Um, but we try to stay general enough so that, um, irregardless of what option you choose, um, the language will cover that.
But our obligation, if we say adding 4K, is to add 4K. Exactly where it goes isn't part of the resolution, but the fact that we're saying it is what we're, what we're obligated to provide, correct?
Correct, correct. But I, I mean, you, for example, uh, you know, under the statutes, you have to describe, you know, the purposes that you're borrowing the money for. And then, uh, under those statutes, you can only spend the borrowed money for those purposes. And so I always use an example, if you go to referendum to build, you know, a eight-room classroom addition to the elementary school and it passes and you come back and say, well, you know what? We really wanted to build a swimming pool at the high school. Well, that, that, you know, that's not going to fly, you know? Your, your purpose language has to capture the essence of what you're going to be doing with the funds.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, I'd use the example as well that, um, you know, in doing our purpose language, um, we run into projects like this quite often where there, there could literally be a punch list of twenty to thirty different items that you may want to address in a particular borrowing. We don't get into the punch list items. We try to capture the essence of what you're doing with broader language, like improvements to buildings, uh, upgrades, uh, replacements, things of that nature, additions. Um, and then the details of what that includes, um, are really, you know, left to the actual project itself. But we have the authority with the borrowed funds to pay for those projects.
So we do, we need to decide the dollar amount, we decide whether it's A, one B, two C, or and, and this or not that. I mean, we need to.
Not exactly. We, if we say that we're going to add classroom space and CTE, we aren't going to specify that it's, we're using one A as the budget to get us to that realm, but we don't have to say that.
We have to choose one, two, three, four, but we don't have to choose the subcategories tonight.
Right.
Is that fair?
Right.
Yeah.
I guess the first, the first question.
We need to come up with a number that says not to exceed.
Right, okay.
Okay, I guess, I guess we have, you know.
I get it.
We've got three questions to answer tonight. The first one is yea or nay, if we want to move forward with it or not move forward with it? And if we decide to move forward with it, how much?
We need like an amicus motion with all three of these together, because we need to really, all of them impact the next, right? And that's really what we're discussing, all of them together.
Well, or.
Or maybe we're not.
Or specifically separating them and doing yes on one, no on the other.
Right, and we can, but I'm just saying, like, I think for discussion purposes, I think they're all kind of on the table, right?
Well, they have to be, but you have to consider them individually as well, because one might pass and the other might not, right? So if you, if you get the building and you don't get the other one, can you staff the?
Or are they, they're not going to be, it's not going to be check yes or no, it's going to be two separate things?
Yes, they have to be, ones.
Oh, God, man, it's just the beginnings.
One of the, one of the.
Right, like, did I say that?
One time of the deal and the other.
Cash.
Got it, got it.
They have to be separate, but one, because one is borrowing and, you know, issuing bonds and the other is for exceeding revenue.
Okay.
But I'm just saying though, if we did, if we do A with the building, get the thirty-two thousand square feet and we don't get the resolution on the operating, right, cash flow side of it, you can't, what type, you, we might not be able to staff and offer everything that we're talking about in this new space.
That's a different possibility.
Right, in this case, we would be able to figure it out, but say you were building a whole new school and you had to have that administration and, and all, but everything with it. Then one only works if the other one passes. In this one, they could, if, if either one passed and the other one failed, we could get, we could live with it.
You just have to make choices of what else you give up to, so that'll enter whatever.
Because I was thinking about it, which was, okay, what's the sum total that's going to be palatable for the public? To make sure, you know what I mean?
You should be considering it.
I know, but I was hoping that that would be like, you know.
It's not what I could feel.
If it's less than a hundred dollars per thousand, people can, you know, like that feels different than if it's a hundred and ten. You know what I mean, like there's just.
There are thresholds, for sure.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what they are and I'm not an expert, but I just feel that, you know, that there's something to like, well, it's less than a hundred, I, I, you know.
Well, the, you know, the data suggests sticking around a dollar is your good chance of passing, that's kind of your, you know, it's.
And like Brian said, once we get to a spot, we can restructure things to, to, to manage some of that.
Fireball increases. So we're, we're still on the facilities, I'll share this with everyone again.
But so that specifically, let's talk option A on the high school. So that's fifteen million on bill, right? Without, without making them classrooms, that's making them a building, but not making them a, a functioning room. So that's going to be fifteen percent more.
Well, and I, and I, I, that's what I questioned Sarah, I mean, that's, that's if you're starting fresh, right? That wouldn't include moving our existing woods and metals and equipment that we have. So I, I, I just want to caution, it's not, that's just a general rule, I think, for new, right, Sarah?
Correct, I mean, yep. Yeah, correct, it is dependent on what you might be taking from your existing, um, just, uh, rooms and use versus purchasing new.
Right, but I think it'd still be wise to come up with some sort of.
Five percent or seven percent, I mean, it's, it's, it's still close to two million dollars.
More.
Most, uh, different, or a million dollars at least.
Than the budget.
Mm-hmm.
That's reversed, one million, two million.
It's only money.
Let's.
Make more of it tomorrow.
So that number has to be sixteen million. And.
Oh, that's only my job.
Four K is five million, so that's twenty-one before we get to the next.
Oh, shoot.
And then, uh, HVC, um, a pretty solid number, uh, at one point six. And those are, I mean, I thought that was on a list, right? But those are things that we have to consider at some point before we're through the next ten years, I'm assuming.
Correct.
I would, yeah, strongly.
The only way to not take them out of our regular budget is via referendum and it.
Or the magic light guy comes and sells us on a deal, right? There's got to be a.
Fund forty-six, we've got fifty-one dollars in it.
Fifty-three.
Lot of it.
Fifty-three on it, yeah. Um, and then lastly, the, uh, parking, you can see there, pavement drives to high school, one and a quarter to one and a half million. And then, uh, stadium field and track, four to four and a half million. And again, thus, thus, that's why we asked, let's prioritize in case it all doesn't make the list.
So, so on the, the last one there, the stadium field and track, how much of that is driven by the fact that we're changing the shape?
Craig?
Versus just taking out and putting turf down. I'm just trying to.
A large chunk. So the question was, how much of that big number is attributed to us having to, um, reconfigure the shape of the track? Rather than just take out the, the current dirt and grass and, and put in turf inside the track?
The majority of it is the, is the turf field, uh, I would just kind of eyeballing it. Probably two, three, three quarters, um, the turf in the field. But regardless of the size of that, and the rest of it is reconfiguring the track to accommodate the larger field, et cetera. Is that?
I mean, I find.
I thought so too, because I was never asked that question, no. I was left it as is, put in turf from the existing thing, we did five million and a half.
Okay, so I had to.
CTE is the easy sell, right? I mean, that, I mean, I don't think anybody would dispute that that's a priority. And then I feel like that to the public, you know, that's, that would be palatable.
I agree, and sort of the.
That's what I'm saying, like that to me is the easy one, you know? I'm not really going to get people to vote on, about HVAC, right? I mean, but there are things that it's like, well, if I'm going to go, I might as well get some necessities too. And where's the balance that you can strike in there of where you tip the scales? And I, I don't want to ask that, but I think that's the analysis.
Right.
I think part of the balance for the HVAC is to say that there's also long-term cost savings in getting newer, more efficient.
Yeah, and HVAC isn't, HVAC also isn't going to piss people off, like a football field, it will piss off certain people. HVAC, I mean, you know, HVAC's pretty phenomenal.
The other part of HVAC is, over time, we have to spend that one point six million dollars in the next ten or eleven years.
It means six in ten years.
It's going to come out of our regular budget in little bites and bits, and it's going to cost us opportunities. So I think that's an easier sell on that side.
Yeah, I don't think anybody, but nobody's going to be like, I can't believe they're asking for HVAC. You know, people will say, well, why the hell do we need 4K change? But people aren't going to say, you know, and so, you know, those are easy to me to, you know, nobody's going to even ask that question with HVAC. That's just going to be, it's just going to go through.
Right, forty percent are going to vote no, because they do, and forty percent are going to vote yes, because it's school and the rest of them are going to decide in their personal circumstance.
Yeah.
Well, if that's the case, then what the hell are we debating? Let's just, let's ask for it all.
It is the case, but, but you, because, because.
That's true.
Twenty percent.
Because ten percent of, or the rest of it, that twenty percent, ten percent plus one person, either tips the scale one way or the other. So you do have to make it palatable to vote, it's, that's who you're really shooting at, is that tight middle.
Yeah.
Okay, so, selecting our project scope.
So is, whose proposal is this that made it in draft resolution? This is your proposal?
That's based on, uh, you have the Jen Clushold, myself, uh, and, uh, the work of the facilities task force. And we asked Tom Graves to do this draft and he's on here, because if we decide to change some of the things within it, he will literally make the changes as we speak, email to, um, Pam Jenner, I, we will print the new ones off and have you sign it tonight. Because it has to be submitted tomorrow, if we board decides to move forward.
And by the notes, by the agenda, up to twenty-three million. We can't do all that for twenty-three million.
Correct. Oh, there's twenty, I think if I added it all up, uh, there's twenty-six and a half million dollars of projects, if we did everything on that list.
Well, and everything is on this list.
No, if we did everything on that.
Yeah, I understand, but, but, I mean, that's not even the proposal.
This is just, it's twenty.
Yep.
So the number's twenty, but, uh, all the projects went out up to over twenty, right?
Correct. And Tom, can you speak to why we have to put that little asterisk on the agenda and kind of the notice, the notice laws and why we?
Well, yeah, I think, um, because, you know, the twenty million, I think, was a target amount and is, you know, I understood it. There was a possibility that the board might go higher than that. Um, just so for, um, open meeting law and notice purposes, we want to make sure that the agenda reflects the fact that the, the twenty million that's written in the resolution was a preliminary number and we had to give some idea as to, you know, how high that number might go above twenty million. Um, and so discussing that with Tim and, and Jennifer, uh, we use the twenty-three million as a top end.
Tim, could you slide us for the CTE? Not just the C, sorry.
I mean, the proposal is twenty million, the 4K and the, well, this, this includes the athletic field and track, I didn't see that.
Yeah, and, uh, that's not what's the task force recommending.
And we could have done all of that within somewhere around a twenty-three if we took option B instead of option A and if we took, you know, the lowest of the, of each of them, would have been closer to that. But if we took the recommendations, we can't get there even for the point.
So if we take, if we take the, the lowest budget, we can do everything?
Well, if we do option B, it's, it's thirteen million instead of six, fifteen or sixteen. I don't know that we can get everything in there, but it.
But we can get more, I mean, that's kind of like, you know, I want a Cadillac, but I can only afford Chevy, right? I mean.
Right, but then the question becomes, to me, is the CTE the, the no-brainer? You know, do I get my, what I want in CTE and forfeit the athletic field improvement? Because CTE is the best use of our money. Positively impacts the most people in the distance, whatever your question is or whatever your.
You might wonder, you know, for this resolution, you could confirm or deny this, Tom, but, you know, if, just because it's included in the resolution doesn't mean we have to, we're obligated to do it. So it's better to say, say, you know what, we, we might be able to do the athletic fields, include it, knowing that the budget might not, you know, allow it, you know, as we. Just run it down, just because it's in here doesn't mean you have to do it, but vice versa, we can't, we can't say, you know.
Can't do something that's not it.
Right, we're going to build a.
Right. Isn't, if it isn't popular though, could that get you a go across the board?
It could, because we got to be intentional.
There's a risk.
We want to be as close to accurate as possible.
And the other risk is if you put sport field in here and it passes and you can't get to it because you fill your budget.
Right.
You lost them for a generation.
That's what happened with the auditorium. Was there was a, there was a, um, a referendum that was passed that included putting an auditorium on the high school when the high school was originally built. And budgetary, when it came right down to it, they couldn't do it. And that, that tipped off a significant part of the population for a lot of years.
And enough people decided, rightly or wrongly, in their own head or wherever, that it was put into the athletic instead. They chose to do versus theirs, you know, so it became a we versus them.
So that's why when, when the referendum came about the last time to get the auditorium, there were a lot of people that were saying, you're going to do it this time, right? And it wasn't like, it wasn't like we just ripped a pencil through it and said, oh, we got the money, but we didn't really plan that. We did, it's just cost-wise, it just, it never happened.
Well, I think it is a little disingenuous then to. Well, I think it is a little disingenuous then to say that we want twenty million and we're gonna do all these things.
That's why we're tweaking this referendum.
Yeah, but I'm thinking this big picture, I, I don't like, I don't like that.
That's why this discussion is happening before we make that decision.
And then.
We want to go into it.
We need it as accurate as we can get it because people wanna know where their money is being spent. They don't like this nebulous thing out there that says, well, these are the projects that we're thinking of. This is how much money we need, and these are the things we're probably gonna spend a million on. No, they want something, you know. That's more definite.
And as a practical matter, will this be the way that, that it reads when I check yes or no on the ballot? This is literally what I'm gonna see.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tom.
No, that's, uh, that's correct. That's what you'll see on the ballot.
Well, that looks like a much lawyer more than a gentleman.
And that's, that's half.
She's a lawyer, Tom.
You know, that, that's just.
That's half the problem with referendum.
Right.
Lawyer.
You write it, that's all the problem with it, but you. You write it, if you want it to lose, you write it one way if you want, yeah, I mean, not, not specifically school ones, but anytime that there's a, something on a ballot. You write it a specific way that's.
Specifically vague enough and open to interpretation.
So, so you can get option C on the four K. Option two for the CTE and the HVAC for just under.
Twenty-nine.
I mean, almost like.
Me too, that sounds like all.
Just under one.
That's. Me too, that sounds like all we'll get.
Or nineteen points, eighteen, nineteen points, so, yeah.
Realistically, that's all we're gonna get for twenty million. We want the other stuff, we gotta go ahead, right? I mean, that's.
Even, yeah, option A on CTE is more than, puts us over the twenty million.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I just.
Without the athletic fields, four K and.
But maybe that's, maybe that's the way we need to try to work through this, which is, are we okay with only two of the four? And twenty million, or do we wanna do all of them and do twenty-three million or whatever?
Twenty-three million isn't gonna pass.
And twenty-three million isn't gonna get all of them done.
He could if he didn't lower it.
You don't think twenty-three million will pass? From Tim?
But do you think?
The only way twenty-three million would, in my opinion, would pass is if it were the. You know, with option A. We did the FFNE. We did the four K. I think we can make that go. Don't, and possibly if we could fit it in the HVAC. But beyond that, I don't think there's a stomach, you know, everybody complains about the parking, but. Short of building parking ramps on, on the, on the facilities, I don't see how we're gonna solve it. Now, you go to a Christmas concert in Roberts, and you've got every spot at school park. And all the way up and down Division Street and all the way down Main Street.
God bless Color, we don't have to go to those anymore.
So, the, the three times a year that parking affects you, you live with it, but when your kid can't take a shop class. Or can't get a day, you need these things, or it's a substandard space or equipment. That one bites to me. That, that has more bite to it than I have to walk farther to watch my kid in the concert.
Yeah, I mean, that, part of that is, like, if you go to the high school and we start talking about football games and stuff like that, we could also bust in and use our other parking rotations as well. Right, there's ops, expenses versus building asphalt.
So I personally would go with. The upgraded CTE facilities, the budget for option C and the HVAC.
Option C, four K?
Option C, four K.
And HVAC.
And the HVAC.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, so sixteen point two-five for the. Uh, CTE, five million for the, uh, and one point six, so twenty-two point one or whatever that is. Okay, twenty-three point, and do we, twenty-three point one? Is that right?
Can have a dollar amount, so we just change up to an amount of twenty-three million.
Yeah, or be specific, twenty-two point whatever, because that's.
That include, does that include the HVAC?
One point six plus fifteen point two-five.
What's option C?
Plus one.
Five point four.
For the, to equip the CTE plus five for. Options, either five or.
Yeah, and again, that's the assumption that we'd be able to purchase the property, so.
So we'd wanna have a.
Why, I'm telling you, when I read that, is we had enough property that we wouldn't have to, it would be to our convenience.
Well, let's see the back, that, that parking lot's not a house, correct? I know, yes. But we can always pull back to option B. So, once you come up with a recommendation, I have some questions left up for Craig, right? Yeah, so Craig, you have some flexibility with, 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 within these options, obviously, right? Let's say, wanna go with, uh, so we, you know. We could, there's some, are there some options within these options, Craig?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, if we wanted to tweak the, the space program or the, the spaces that are included within. The, uh, within the additions, uh, we could, we could reduce those down. Uh, I think the, the key pieces are that we have. You know, the four K classrooms, the storage, restrooms, you know, just the basics. As long as we can cover those and then everything else, we can, can kinda work around as we need to, to fit the budget.
Option C might not need a dedicated playground, right?
Right, but, and so there's a playground right there already, might be a little FFNE for some additional four K playground equipment added to the existing playground. Things like, so.
So you would take out everything after classroom renovations, so take out softball, field relocation, take out parking, take out athletic field. And traffic, traffic improvements, but then leave the HVAC.
Softball, relocation, I think would have to be in there.
That's, that's the CTE's causing that.
But do we have to put that in there? Isn't that kinda like a side thing to the relocation?
We would have to put that in there, Tom, softball field relocation, if that's part of the scope.
And track relocation, right? Cross-country, cross-country, no, it's.
I mean, to me, that, to me, that's like, well, then you gotta include that you're changing the exit door.
Well, you're taking away programming space, so you have to replace the programming space. Exits are, are.
Yeah, I'm just saying like.
Somewhere but above.
Again, thinking, thinking as a voter when I'm reading this, I'm like, I'm not amped up to relocate the softball field, that's stupid. You know?
Problem is transparency. If you, if you try to hide, because that's gonna be, it's gonna be an item in the, in the budget, that's gonna be.
Craig.
Say, two hundred thousand, if two hundred fifty.
Are the fixtures and furniture in the number for the four K?
No, they aren't in that one either. Uh, there'd probably be an assumption that you would move some of that existing furniture over in, from your existing four K classes.
And some would have to be purchased.
Yeah. Yep.
But Scott, so your, your proposal, so if we leave the softball, it would be and parking, or that stays into, and I mean, what gets.
Parking, athletic field and track improvements would vanish.
Wait, parking, athletic field and track, so those, those three things are out, under your, under what you just went through.
Is there an option between the options of, um, A and B of the CTE? I mean, because we're putting up like a big addition on versus not doing an addition, really?
There, there is.
Could you do, would you, I mean, I don't know where the savings come in, right? I mean, it seems like there's a certain amount per square foot when you start to furnish things.
So, yeah, um, a CT staff member approached Mr. Soderberg, shared his ideas, shared with me, um, yeah, um. Um, I modified version of.
So option A with a smaller addition?
Correct.
Yeah, with, with less square feet, but.
And, yeah, repurposing some existing things, yeah. Again, if we.
But if we.
The scope that fits within this, this, um, resolution and not to exceed. We can work out those details over the next.
And the thing with this is, the, the resolution is not to exceed, so if we find a better way to do it cheaper. Then we've done our due diligence in, in protecting the taxpayers' money and saying that, yes, we author, you authorized us to. Borrow up to twenty-three million, but we did the whole thing for twenty-one point seven.
So we were specific when we did the auditorium that it was gonna be a six-hundred-seat auditorium. That's what we told people, that's what we said, and then when we were getting on bu- budget questions. The builder said, well, let's just make the auditorium smaller. No, that's not an option. But we're not saying a thirty-six thousand or twenty-eight thousand or twenty-two thousand square foot CTE space. So we're not gonna be specific about the footprint of it, so we have latitude if we find a way that works well for the design.
But do you think that that was effective in getting that auditorium referendum passed?
Yes, because.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, if you put twenty-eight thousand square foot, maybe, maybe twenty million seems more valuable.
That, that doesn't, that, that's not gonna, um, jive with the, the public, because they have no idea. If you put twenty thousand or twenty-eight thousand.
The six-hundred-person auditorium was a meaningful number for.
Yeah, because they can, they can picture it, they know, they know how big a, you know, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred seat auditorium is. Everybody can picture that, because they've got to go to theaters all their lives, fun.
Okay, well, I would disagree, because I would not be able to pick, picture a six hundred, and I could picture twenty thousand.
But here's what they know about a six-hundred-person auditorium, it fits all of our students and staff. For an all-school, whatever, and a five-hundred doesn't. So why would we build one that we can't put everybody in for our school meeting? You know, I, that, that was the cognitive side of it, in my view.
What was the, what was the staff's, I mean, the, we got the recommendation on this that was listed, but. Did that include the staff's position or thoughts, or is that inclusive of that?
Much, and, and much more.
Okay.
Right, the staff was brainstorming what they need and.
But I was just trying to figure out, because they're gonna be the biggest cheerleaders for this, right? And so do they support mixing the. Parking, athletic field and track improvements?
We haven't, uh, it's been, those are very preliminary with the staff, and it's been now with the facilities task force. And again, the staff was kinda brainstorming what they need, and then, of course, our budget has made the funnel, uh, narrow. Um, but I, if you're looking for kind of like, to Scott's eye, and if you're asking me for a recommendation. You know, I would agree with Scott, the four K, the CTE, the HVAC, not to exceed twenty-three million.
Or, yeah.
And then we.
I came up with twenty-one point five, but if.
And if, because I talked to me and, you know, and this is, it's.
And that included some of that, um, but.
And that, that gets about a buck, ten, ten, I know Howard said, but we're gonna do it.
Twenty-one point.
Brian, since we got the expert on the, on the line, Brian, what is the impact of a twenty-three million dollar facility?
So, um, in, in the base assumptions that we had been using. It, that would put you at, uh, you know, one twelve, um, for twenty-three, but I've been playing with other assumptions of debt restructuring and payments. Um, you know, I, I can get you close to the, to the dollar, potentially to ninety-nine cents, but I'm not gonna commit to that tonight. Um, I want some other people to look at what I'm playing with here, but, um, you know, I, I can get you awfully close. To a dollar, if not just under a dollar, um, in, in those twenty-one, twenty-two, and maybe even up to the twenty-three.
But so then, because that was the forty-nine cents plus five cents for every million we went over twenty-one, that, that's what.
Yeah, that's, that's the assumption.
And that includes the other part.
Yeah, I mean, what I don't wanna do is, is make the number. To me, to me, B is more than A, and I don't wanna screw up B because I got greedy on A. I mean, I'm talking about A, the, the number.
Several questions, so.
Understood, but people are gonna, I, I suspect people will look at, you know, they're gonna say, well, what's my tax impact? They're gonna wanna know those numbers. I just, that's, that's, that's my concern. I mean, I'm not running for reelection, I'm a tax spend down man, let's take twenty-five million, I don't care. All right? But you know what I mean, like, I. But I, I don't wanna, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't want it to be successful, that's my number one goal. I don't wanna do something that's gonna screw it up.
But that's, honestly, I, I, I agree with Howard on it, that I, that I think when you're going with both, I think twenty million's the number. Like, I, I don't like, I haven't said that's, that's the impression that I have, when, like, I, I, I don't know.
Right.
I mean, to me, like, you, I can completely rationalize twenty-three. It's a dollar more per month for a hundred thousand, right? I mean, that, that's like, it's. That's two, two Starbucks coffees per year, right? That's.
So that's why I go to the twenty-one point five. Twenty-one point five gets us eight, the three things that I wanna get accomplished here. And it's not twenty-three, and it's a thoughtful number, it's intentionally twenty-one point five, because that's exactly what I think we need.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good analysis.
What does that leave us with, FFNE, do we try and try and squeeze it out of what we?
Some of that is that included, Howard, I included a million dollars in FFNE for the shop.
Okay.
And six hundred thousand for the elementary, if it was four point four, I did five. So that's six hundred thousand plus a million for FFNE for all that we're doing, if I did my math right. It's five million for the, um, four K, it's, it's, uh, one point six for the HVAC. And it's sixteen point two-five for the. CTE. It's fifteen point two-five plus a million for FFNE, it's.
Right.
So.
Any disagreement with that, Craig?
No, those sound, those sound right.
So then, Tom, if we went with that, after hearing that.
Might twenty-two or something, twenty-two point eight-five.
Would you recommend that?
That's basically twenty-three. Twenty-two point eight.
Twenty-two point eight-five?
That's, that's using.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-two point five is, I, was the number that I had before, not twenty-one point.
And Howard, but your, your earlier response was, we'll never get that.
Well, but Howard's, Howard's based on the assumption that. Brian can't get her number down closer to a dollar by doing some other stuff.
So your, your position that we never get twenty-three million is because you don't think we can go above a dollar total? I mean, is that your, that's why that you gave that reaction? Or something?
I think anything over a dollar, we start, we start having issues, but I think. We could probably sell it up to a dollar ten, beyond that.
So it's the dollar, not the twenty-three versus the twenty?
Right, so, but I mean, that's not here, right, on any of these.
No.
And then the other part of this.
Still looking at twenty million versus twenty-three million.
We will never borrow money cheaper than we will right now. We said that last time, but we are right now, aren't we, Brandon?
But, and you just saved a million nine off your previous referendum last, earlier this month.
If not now, when, right?
So your recommendation, Scott, would be?
Twenty-two point five.
Twenty-two point five million.
Or.
Facilities.
Yep.
Now, would, that would be four K addition, CTE.
And HVAC.
HVAC and. And the acquisition of land.
Yes, well, we don't have to put the acquisition of land within this, because if it passes. We're going to spend up to five million on four K, but not specifically in that spot.
Would that have to be included, Tom? So Tom, speak to that, please.
On the acquisition of land? Yeah, the, uh, the, here, the, the point on putting that language in, uh, the borrowing resolution. Is that, um, you could then use proceeds of the bonds for that acquisition. If you don't have language like that in, um, the resolution, then you couldn't use, um. The bond proceeds or the barb funds for the acquisition of that land.
Tom, if they want the land, then that's, that, that language doesn't hurt us, though?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
We can't acquire the land because they decide it's not for sale or, or, or whatever the reason is. That doesn't hurt us to have that language in there?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't hurt you.
Okay. So we don't have to buy land, but we're allowing ourselves to buy land by putting the language in?
Well, you're, you're allowing yourselves to use the proceeds of the borrowing to buy the land. In order to, well, i- i- in order to buy the land, um, the authority to acquire property under the statutes in common school districts rests with the electors. So typically, outside of a borrowing context, if you wanted to go out and purchase some land, um, you would have to put that on your annual meeting agenda and have the electors approve that at the annual meeting. The board doesn't have, um, the authority to go out and purchase land. You have to get that authority from the electors. So if you, and I, I don't want to scratch too deep on this. I had the discussion with Tim on this. So the language that's in here is generic language that would allow you to use proceeds of the bonds to purchase the land. But you would have to take an additional step, um, because the language isn't, isn't really specific. You'd have to take the additional step of going to the electors, let's say, at the annual meeting, to get the actual authority to acquire that land. So there, it's, it's, it's a, it's a two-pronged question there. Where do you get the authority to buy the land, and where do you get the funds to buy the land? This gets you to where you get the funds to buy the land.
Thank you.
And, uh, a- as, as long as I have the floor here, um, in the purpose language and in some of the discussions, I understood that, um, some of the, this, uh, CTE addition to the high school would also include some renovation to existing classrooms?
Correct.
Okay, so I think that, that the term classroom renovations should stay in this purpose language here?
Yes.
And then, um, I would, I would have a suggestion, because there was a question about softball field relocation. And there's also discussion here of using some of the proceeds for FFNE, which I use the more general term, equipment. Um, uh, I, I would suggest language, um, that again is more, um, uh, general than specific on softball field relocation, but also including, uh, equipment to say, and let me try to just read it out here, improvements to the high school, including a career and technical education addition, classroom renovations, and related site improvements and equipment acquisition.
Perfect.
And then, and then have the acquisition of land in there as well.
Yes, do we think that-
And HVAC, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, HVAC is in there too. Yep.
Yep.
Do we think we should flip the four K and the high school improvements in order? Because that was the order that our group thought was more important? Or not? I don't feel strongly for-
I think that'd be worth it. Yeah, I think you're right.
Tom, the suggestion is to, uh, have the order of the language in the order of priorities, so have the-
Yep, yep, no, I can do that. I can do that.
And then not to exceed twenty-two point five million, is what I heard?
Yeah.
Make your motion, Mr. DeGroot.
I think we're getting there. Yeah.
Tom, do you think you have what you need to be able to read that back to us?
Um, uh, yeah. Um, I think, uh, uh, let, let me try it here. You might be a little stilted, because we're reversing the language a little bit, but, um, uh, amount not to exceed twenty-two million five for the purpose of paying the costs of improvements to the high school, including the career and technical education addition, classroom renovations, uh, related site and equipment acquisition, um, uh, HVAC upgrades at all district school buildings. Um, and if, if, this is where it's gonna get stilted, because this acquisition of land adjacent to the elementary school, I think is gonna remain at the end, then I'd flip over into the elementary school, you know, the, um, uh, constructing, equipping, a K-four addition and related improvements at the elementary school, and acquisition of land adjacent to the elementary school. That's sort of the order that it would go in. And I, like, uh, Tim said, we can redo this language very quickly and shoot it out to you. Uh, uh, so you can see it in its final context.
Sure. Another question for you, Tom. Um, HVAC upgrades at all district school buildings? Should it be all district buildings in case we want to do something at a bus garage, or, I mean, is that, is that legitimate, or is that being too picky?
No, I mean, that's, if, 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 again, um, no, I think you could take, just say all district buildings. Um, if you have other buildings that aren't school buildings that might have HVAC upgrades to them?
Well, the district office and bus garage, and I, those are not school buildings, or are they school buildings? I don't know.
Yeah. No, I could, I could, I can take out school and just say all district buildings.
Your school building must be not just a certain classroom.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
I think you're better off with school buildings. I think that plays better. I mean, assuming that this is a still part of the school, right?
Yes.
So in this, in the order here, then, uh, you would have the high school language, you would then have the elementary school K-four addition, um, and then the acquisition of the land adjacent to the elementary school, and then actually the HVAC upgrades would be the last purpose in the list.
Correct, sure.
Okay. So what about district school buildings? Do you want to leave it district school buildings or district buildings?
District school buildings is fine.
District school buildings is fine, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I, did I hear, Tom, that you eliminated the classroom addition when speaking of the high school?
No.
No.
So-
Did you include classroom addition?
I, no, I, I took the classroom addition language out and just left classroom renovations in.
And I think, Craig, your thoughts on that? I, I would like the flexibility to remain to be able to add a classroom addition in case you modify just a little bit.
Uh, yeah, I, I think you probably want some kind of flexibility along those lines. I don't know if you would want to. There's a way that you can word it, that it doesn't necessarily have to be a CTE addition.
Example, I had to keep the culinary yard towards that and just add it to it in that courtyard.
The language that was in the original resolution would probably work for that.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend we keep that, since we have that flexibility.
From high school through current classroom renovations, that portion of that sentence would probably work in its entirety. For the-
Okay, so, i- i- so leave the classroom addition language in there.
Yes.
Okay. So the, um, uh, I, I think, I, I think this was sort of the big hurdle to get over, the initial resolution here. Would there be, um, you know, you, the, the next resolution up is the revenue cap resolution. Is that something, um, that there could be some changes to as well? I'm just thinking timing-wise, I could, I could jump off here, redo this resolution if you're gonna take up some discussion on the revenue cap resolution and then get back on when I, we'll only take fifteen minutes or so for me to do that. Um, and then I could jump back on and see if anything needs to be done with the revenue cap resolution. The third resolution, which is the referendum resolution, references the twenty million, so that would have to be revised to show the twenty-two point five million. Um, and I could do that very quickly as well. So I guess the question is, are, will there be, is there a possibility of some changes to the revenue cap resolution?
Not before you get back.
Yeah, not, not, I, I, I like it exactly as, as is, nothing, there's no new information to present since our last, um, I'll just confirm with Jen, throw it out to Jen. Is, is there any new information or edits that need to be made to that revenue cap resolution? Now, Jen's not responding, but no, there is, there is no new information since our last conversation. Tom, I don't anticipate
that that number is the one oh five number, or is that like one oh five plus something?
It's the one oh five, but it's more about the number. You know, the one oh five is for kind of internal use. You know, it doesn't say anything here. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that those two are, like, are they tied out or not?
The number allows us to do
Yeah.
additional as needed.
We did something within that, it'd have to be within the hundred and five percent number of the one point seven the first year and three hundred and fifty after that. Um, so Tom, when you, uh, I, I think, um, not hearing anything different, you, you build a sign-off, work on those two resolutions to change the, the, the wording, and then the, uh, number to twenty-two point five, and then could you please maybe just, uh, email it to, to, um, Jen and I, and then, uh, I'll, I'll, either I or Pam Katner, executive administrative assistant, go and print it off and get it in uh, appropriate board members' hands to sign it tonight.
Did you finalize that? Did we vote?
Not yet. Not yet, no.
Don't let him go.
Yeah, I would, I would hold off until I get that to you to, you know, bring the motion to approve that uh, resolution. Um, and then, uh, so I will sign off here and I will get back to you just as quickly as I can.
Okay. Okay, Scott, you've made a motion for twenty-two point five million.
But Tom, Tom was saying he'd rather get the resolution in our hands to be able to read it. Is that what I'm, I'm-
Right, well, the, the question, we aren't even reading this yet. We're deciding if we're going forward.
Okay.
Right, if everyone-
We're not voting on item thirteen.
I don't think we're reading the language yet. I think we're deciding if we have a consensus that that's the approach we want to take, isn't it?
Yeah.
And then we'll vote on the language.
Okay. I think there's, there's three votes that need to be taken.
Yeah.
The first one is the one you, with your motion, the second one is this not to exceed the compensation, and the third is just to, um, lower resolution.
Yeah.
Providing the referendum election questions.
Yes.
Okay. So-
So I will second Scott's motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Propose a twenty-two point five million authorization, not to exceed twenty-two point five million for construction of the CTE uh, for the addition at the elementary and acquisition, uh, classroom additions and renovations is, is needed, well as HVAC upgrades, uh, for district buildings.
Okay, and we can, so, we can officially authorize that after we do this, right? I mean, we'll, we'll read the, it, we'll read Tom's language.
Yeah.
We're just actually just gonna sign that, aren't we? That's what I was understanding.
But we're gonna vote on, yeah, we're gonna vote on, we need to know that, that we're-
The first one is just consideration of approval of initial resolution. That's the first step. We have to do that for both those things. And then the third one is to approve the wording of what's actually gonna go on the referendum ballot. So there's three steps.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Go for it, facilities, not to exceed twenty-two point five million. Motion, the second on that, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, or the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. The motion carries. Okay, then we move on to the next one, which is consideration of a resolution to exceed the revenue cap commencing with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is where we were discussing the, uh, impact uh, with regards to the hundred and five percent operational referendum. And, yes.
Move approval.
Well, this is based on that number, right, on the one oh five. This language and numbers are based on that.
Correct. Otherwise, it would have been two point one.
Thank you.
I will second your motion also.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, so we have roughly fifty percent, fifty cents fifty cent impact on the mill rate for thousand with the operation. Probably a little higher on the, uh, on the facilities. Wes Bryant can work some magic with us again, so. Um, so we're awaiting the final resolution, which is consideration approval of the referendum providing, uh, the election on the questions. Or approval of resolutions to exceed the district revenue gap commencing in twenty-twenty-one, and approval of the initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty-two point five million.
Correct.
And awaiting the final language from twenty-one.
Correct.
Okay.
So can I ask you just, like, one question on this when we're doing the two that I don't have full understanding of, I guess? There's a, we want to make sure that something passes, right? Because you don't want to bring something forward that doesn't, because there are like teeth in it if you don't pass. Is that correct?
The teeth were removed, right?
Yeah, we're not, we're not frozen at the current-
We're not any longer.
There's only, there's political district repercussions that-
That state. It's all, okay, okay.
But, I guess the time constraints on it is if we may, if we want to make this spring selection, we have to have it filed with the county clerk by tomorrow. If we miss that, then, yeah.
Twenty-nine.
Pardon?
I said plenty of time, somewhere nine.
Yeah, if this meeting ends and we need it for them by today, that's bad.
Yeah, so, um, we missed that deadline, then we're owed another year.
Or is it till November?
It could be November. We have a general election November again.
Not this year.
Not this year.
It looks like it too.
Okay, um, then, um, while we're waiting with that, I would, uh, consider moving on with the remainder of the agenda. And we'll come back to this, uh, if I have votes on it. That's okay with everybody?
Okay with me?
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the design build services agreement with SiteLogic. I don't know if everybody got the contract that they sent to us. Um, I think there are plenty of questions, you know, that we have with that. I definitely had a lot of questions on it. To me, uh, there were a lot of, uh- There were a lot of, uh, a lot of language in there that. Put, uh. On us. Liability or any wrongdoing, and I think a lot of it was on, on the owner. Very little of it was on SiteLogic. I think the other major question, and Scott pointed it out to me again. As we did not get a price. When they're asking as, as a charge of what they're going to cost, what it's gonna cost us.
Yeah, it needs to be fine tuned and, and.
I would need.
Presented to our attorney and.
Yeah.
Are those numbers not in those numbers?
I didn't see any numbers in there, either hard numbers or.
It doesn't say what they're charging us.
What's precarious contract?
No, I mean. But are they, they're not in those numbers that we reviewed per chunk?
No. Well, there, there would be, there would be involved in that as a percentage of those contracts. But we don't know what that percentage is typically, typically they're anywhere from, I've seen from four to seven percent of it.
So five percent to a million.
Well, and that, is that one, is that built into those numbers? That's part of that number.
So if you're comfortable with the right questions to ask, like maybe if you wanna say, you know, charge power than I, um, with. Meeting with SiteLogic and go over these details and then have it run by our legal counsel.
It seems like there should be a little back and forth about what the terms are. Because I, I'm sure the first draft is very contractor friendly, I mean, that's the idea, right?
Yeah, why would you write the absence protection, that's true.
But, but if it's a million bucks, do we have to have that in here? In our referendum?
Absolutely, we wanna spell all that out, get all those answered, so I mean, we didn't put that in.
No, but typically those are, those are involved in, in that number.
So when Myron or, or Kraus or any of them come up with their number for the, it includes their profit. Our, our estimated number for the project would have their profit built in.
SiteLogic seeing like Kraus Anderson or whoever.
I would wanna confirm that.
Right, but I think our previous ones did.
Yes.
It was not to exceed X number of dollars, here's what you're going to get. Here's what you're gonna spend, and we'll get the profit that we get out of that top line number.
Oh, I get it.
Down, not, not up from there.
Okay.
Yeah, I get it, I'm just saying though, would we already, I mean, do we need the number to go up? If there's a potential of five percent.
Typically not, that all those costs are, are built into this.
They, yeah, they estimated with their profit.
There's, there's an allowance in there for.
So that's already included in there.
But.
He doesn't need to know what that number is.
That's supposed to have details.
And we should look at our previous contracts and see how they're worded as a.
Okay, that's the first, that's the first question that I would have, the second question that I would have is Tim and I. Have been working with SiteLogic, but they are not necessarily the only architect in, in, on. Uh, that we, we either have worked with in the past or would be willing to work with. And do we need to go forth and. A bit from other contractors? You know? This is just one that, you know, we've had experience with, they've, they've been very good to us. Estimates and such. I know we've had one in the past. And, uh, we have had their last two refer on the run by a woman associates. Haven't been totally enamored with the work that we have received out of them on, on the last. Two, especially the last one. I know we've worked at Kraus Anderson before, my issue is usually with Kraus Anderson is. If we decide to go with them, they have a set fee and if the referendum passes. They're fine, if the referendum does not pass, they still want their honey. Most of them will work on a contingency basis if the referendum passes. Hoping that it will, that they will get. Pretty much what Site, SiteLogic is agreed to. So I'm throwing.
It's our interest to have someone that. That's gonna work hard for the referendum to pass, if I get paid whether it passes or not, I might not work as hard as, as SiteLogic is gonna work to get it passed.
But, but, but your question is, do you need to like put an RFP out to get those?
Right. And now we can continue working with these people and sign a contract with them, that's a dribble.
Well, that's the way you're gonna get better terms in your contract, right? Because you're gonna have competitive bids and you're gonna have competitive base terms. That's the way you're gonna negotiate, right? I mean, it seems to me that typically in the public, that's what you're required to do, right? And put on RFP and then, you know, to be good stewards of the money. And quite frankly, to get yourself the best deal. It's pain in the ass.
Why don't disagree with it? I've been down that road.
But I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do.
I think we have to, I mean, we do, we do that with our.
We do with our snowplowing or whatever, you know, I mean, like.
Every other, every other service we do with snowplowing, we do with.
Yeah.
Due diligence says that. Now, if we only get back one, we only get back one, and that's what we do. But I think the opportunity has to be out there for competitive bids. Even though it's not worth.
And then we have to do this very rapidly. How fast would you turn this around?
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we do, uh, you know, it might be my question, we have to do an RFP. That's, that's a ton of work and time, now you gotta wait for responses and proposals. Versus do you just invite like we did last time, we like pick three or four? And we invite.
That's fine too, I hope it has to be a formal RFP.
Yeah, because it can't be because we're not really good.
Do you have any opinions, David?
Uh, nothing too differing from everything we've been discussing so far, I mean, it kind of sounds in line, I think we should probably. At least entertain, um, you know, talk to some other people instead of, I guess. You know, choosing now, uh, before we even know exactly what's gonna happen, so I'm all for checking around a bit.
I mean, so, so part of it is the design build services, so. Are we gonna limit ourselves to like a one stop shop for everything, including like putting the desks in and everything on the wall and everything? Is that what we're looking for, is like a one stop general contractor? Because then you're, I mean, then there's only a few that would do something like this.
That's easiest way to do it.
No.
It may not necessarily be the cheapest way to do it, but. We've, we've had too much trouble, we don't wanna get into that situation where we have the designer. Doing this, the general contractor's doing that, we've got a problem. And essentially, it's a general contractor's problem because the architect says this is what I designed. Now, you guys figure it out. And, you know, we, we've had that, we've had that with PMSI when we had the, them, we had that. Battles between the world and Myron.
Well, in the beginning of this, we were, we wanted to be start that, you're not hiring a contractor because they wanna build something.
Yeah.
Before we even knew that that's the direction that the community thought, so.
So.
Yeah, I mean, there's only.
That's where we're at.
Four or five that we would even consider, and if it's all in.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you, do you need names of people, or is that something?
Well, I've got some names that I would entertain approaching, but I would, I'm interested in any names you might have also.
Olpus?
Pardon?
Olpus? So, so P U S, they're a design build out of Minneapolis, um, they just built our new facility and then our new addition is, uh, cottage pro. They just did both design builds. Including park, parking lots, everything, right, so, um.
Yeah.
I mean, we always.
Dylan, Hoffman, Engineering, Kraus Anderson, uh, those are the names of them.
Yep.
One more name.
Mark Johnson.
Johnson.
Yep. Yeah, Olpus is the one that I thought of, that, that's a little bit newer. Bring in contact information.
Okay.
From them.
I'm just thinking about the timeline.
That's what I'm saying, I could, I could get connections to get people to come right away, probably, if they want.
Yeah, I, I think that we're looking at no more than two weeks out.
Yeah.
But the bottom line on the agenda is, we can't do any consideration of the. SiteLogic contract or a services agreement that's, that's presented because it's, needs to be vetted better.
Yeah.
Maybe you can get better terms if you suggest that you've been told to.
Well, not only that, there are no terms.
I know.
Any terms would be better than what we've got so far.
And see Tom's back with us.
Yeah, you sent those, uh, to Jen, Pam, I think printing them. Getting ready to print as we speak.
Okay, then our. Our feeling as we, uh, reach out to the companies and see if we can get proposals back.
And ask SiteLogic to send us something less vague that we can put in front of an attorney to. What it looks like, so.
The, I think the major probably, I would say logic right now, we have no idea what it's like.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna cost us whatever this, but what are we gonna get?
I went through that whole thing twice and I didn't see.
Nope, he's scheduled.
Okay.
Don't mind, gotta work with Ben, that part of it. All right.
Okay. So. I don't think you do.
Well, this one comes in, we'll come back to that part.
Okay, then let's move on. We've got a decision for item, uh, D.
Table, item B, right?
Yes.
So I'm D is tabled, then we're going back to, yeah, A.
A and C.
Okay, so we have the resolution before us, um, regarding the twenty-two point five million.
So you guys are looking at a, a fresh copy of which of those exhibits?
Fresh copy of item A.
With the twenty-two point five on it.
Thirteen A.
Make the motion, somebody will read this alone, am I correct?
Yes, I will read it.
Okay.
Do we have to read it? We all got it in front of us.
Well, David and.
I know.
Everybody.
The district doesn't have.
Yeah, the audience.
Okay, so, this is the first paragraph. With, with this, uh. This is for the initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty-two point five million dollars. Being resolved by the school board of the St. Craig Central School District, St. Craig County. Uh, Wisconsin, that there will be, or shall be issued pursuant to chapter sixty-seven, Wisconsin statutes. General obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty-two point five million. For the purpose of paying the cost of improvements to the high school, including career and technical education addition. A classroom addition. Classroom renovations and related site improvements and equipment acquisition. Constructing and equipping a four K addition and related improvements. At the elementary school and acquisition of land adjacent to the elementary school. And HVAC upgrades to all district school buildings. So.
Should it be K four or four K?
K four.
Okay.
Is it Eli's phone or what?
All right.
Okay, um. And do I have a motion to. Prove this resolution?
Hold on, I just have one question, or maybe, maybe after the motion is second discussed, I'm just looking at, before you get a motion. Including, okay, high school, including a career and techno, technical education addition. A classroom addition, classroom renovations, so that is a single classroom addition.
Well, it's a single addition.
No, I mean, no, that's, that, that's in addition, including a career and technical education addition. A classroom addition.
It doesn't mean a single classroom, it means a classroom addition and every, every addition that has classrooms in it.
Okay, I don't, I didn't read it that way, but that's what I.
I, I know, I'm, I'm being devil's advocate, I think, to you, but.
Because we don't have a classroom renovation, we have classroom renovations.
Tell us, Tom.
Uh, it, it's not intended to be a single classroom addition, um, I, um. A, a, a classroom addition to me is an addition that has classrooms in it, not just one classroom.
As it is to everybody.
Okay, we did a classroom addition on middle school that contained four classrooms.
Okay.
To the, I didn't quite hear what Kirk said, what was that?
We did a classroom addition to the middle school that consisted of four classrooms.
Okay.
Okay, then at this point, I would entertain a motion, uh, to adopt the resolution language as presented. Don't move. Okay, I have a motion, Scott, second Kirk. Adopt the resolution as presented. Any further discussion?
I'm really worried that we went too high. I'm just really scared that we're like, not gonna get it because we're, I don't know, based on what you said and your reservations, and I just, and I'm just saying that. Because I wanna make sure that we're successful, not because I don't want the extra money, of course, I do for the school district. I'm just nervous.
I think the, the main thing that we need to consider is it's not. It's the tax impact, that's. The question do or die, once that, once that gets out.
Because that will be what will, people will.
If we educate people, they'll vote on the tax impact.
Yeah, the real, the real. Cause that's what I was, our reservation is that if we go over a dollar, it becomes questionable. If we go over a dollar ten, he doesn't think that there's a, a chance that it will pass. But that has to do with tax impact, not twenty million versus twenty-two point five.
But practically.
There's an emotional threshold to every number, and twenty-two point five is more than twenty or nineteen point nine 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 nine, or whatever.
Yeah, but, but I think, um. Like Brian said, Brian can, Brian can wiggle those numbers a little bit to even it out a little bit more, and he thinks he can get it down a little bit more. Than the, the one point or the dollar twelve, or dollar thirteen. And if he can get, if he can get that down there, which I firmly believe he can, he's a.
Yeah, I just don't wanna be greedy at the expense of losing.
The whole thing.
Right.
That's what I'm really, I'm just, and I don't know, maybe this.
I agree with you, I don't wanna be cheap at, at the expense of having the wrong space built, either, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I don't want the money on the table.
It's tight rope.
You know, I don't want the money on the table.
I, I, I think. At this point, uh, we're not asking for any frills, we're asking for specifics to improve the education of our students. Uh, that includes not only the, the classroom space, but the equipment necessary to do the job. That includes not only the, the classroom space, but the equipment necessary to do the job.
And we need to do a great job of telling people what the hell career and technical edit space is.
That's my point, we got a lot of. There always is when we were friends, so. This is, this is the easy part. Sitting in the and the hardest part is actually getting it filled. And
since again, as I would hope that this is a unanimous decision because of the fact that we have just sent on the resolution itself, it greatly diminishes its chances of passing. So.
Well, and I, to be clear, I'm not suggesting I'm gonna vote against it, I'm just really scared about it. You know, I just.
I know, I know.
Just the facts that we've, we've seen.
We have to, we have to come up with what we believe is the best resolution and solution to the problems that we have, and then we have to do the scary thing. And as we have to put it out there and let somebody else make the decision as to whether or not we can do it. And all of, all of our reservations about, I hope, I hope, I hope we could, we could hope and hope and hope, and we could whittle down and we could get that twenty million dollars and it could still not pass. That's the scary part, the scary part is that we couldn't, is that we couldn't ask for the absolute bare minimum that would just squeak us by and it could still not pass. And so I think our best bet is always to ask for what we believe we need to do the best job and most effective job that we can to educate our kids. That's, that's why we're here in this room.
And we didn't come up with this today, I mean, this has been a process, I, I believe in it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. The vote is up then, so all those in favor of the resolution on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Then we have, running the next resolution.
And one of those needs to be signed. One copy needs to be signed by now. Isn't that, wasn't that just the third resolution that we just voted on now? So we've all been voting.
No, that was a, with, with technical language. With the appropriate language, that we voted on the concept, but not the language, the first time. What did that earlier?
Now we voted on A and we didn't vote on C and we just voted on C, I thought.
That's what I thought. We might say we shouldn't vote for A until Tom gets it in our hands.
We walked through and we just regarded.
We held on C, that's what I thought.
We gave your opinion, the way that it was due.
The reason I asked for a vote was because it would be wasting Tom's effort if, as a group, we decided that we weren't even going to vote on it.
Okay, then we have the next one.
Who's the caucus vote?
The next one is C then, right, because we already
So, um, did you vote on B already then?
Yes.
I don't know.
Okay. While I was gone, that's fine.
So you signed the two that he revised, correct?
I haven't signed anything yet.
And then you'll have to do the third one.
We haven't signed the, we haven't voted.
I'd like to sleep tonight, so. We just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, so I, I was looking, I was looking for the one on. I have to sign that I'm texting to him, so. Okay. So, um, then we've already, uh.
Already voted on B.
Okay, so this is B. So C is on the floor. Okay, and so we have C.
I'm sure I have everything.
And C.
Put the resolutions into.
I don't sign the wrong one, I would get pressured.
We have to vote on C still.
Yep.
So. And, and the, if, if I might. I might just interrupt for a second on C, the, there, the only change to C is in the title, where it had referenced twenty million, it is now twenty-two million five. And in the second whereas, the reference to the not to exceed amount of twenty-two million five. Other than that, the resolution is the same as was given to you earlier.
Will the approval live, changes as noted?
And I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on the resolution providing for referendum election questions of the approval of the resolution to exceed the district's revenue cap, that's in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and the approval of the initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed twenty-two point five million. Okay, I can read all the rest of it, but I don't think you're interested in listening to it, so. We have a motion and a second on that.
Scott and me.
Okay. So, with that. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now the work begins. Okay. With that, we'll move on to item E. Which is determining the number of spaces available for special education students in open enrollment for the twenty twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
And Mr., Mr. President, I'm going to sign off at this point, if that's okay.
Sounds great, thank you very much for your help, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Have a good, have a good night. Bye.
Have a good night as well, I'm gonna sign off.
Brian, thank you, we'll wait for your magic.
Right nearly tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks, bye. You say that now, just what he.
Okay. Okay, so, where are we?
Alright, so this is the annual thing I've required to do in January, where the board determines if it's going to limit spaces available for full special education and regular education, open, open enrollment. Tammy Burke is our open enrollment coordinator as a together exhibit. That breaks it down, as you can see, by district, total number of students open enrolled in, of those which are special education, of those which are virtual education and or in seats, or what we refer to inter-office vocab as brick and mortar. On your chart, it's in seats. Also broken down by grade level there, so this is more of a FYI, but I'll turn it over if there's any questions to Tammy, and then lastly, to Leo Volker, Special Education Director, for a recommendation for B. Any questions for Tammy on this exhibit here, open enrollment students?
Tammy, do you know by percentage, or roughly by percentage, was last year's twelfth grade the same percent as this year's twelfth grade, the ones that we're gonna lose for sure?
Actually, I was just, well, first of all, good evening, thank you for having me, it's a pleasure being here to go over these open enrollment numbers with you. Actually, we have increased a lot with the super seniors that we carried over from last year. Because we went into COVID in March, we ended up having a lot of those seniors that weren't able to finish with us, so we have had those carry over. But with the resident students and the open enrolled in students, our senior numbers, yes, have dra- drastically increased.
Relative to every other grade as well, I mean, they all increased, but seniors more so?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, just a little back history of the board members, why we have to do this, and, and what our recommendation will be, and justification for it, but in, in the past, we did say we limited by grade level, we said, you know what, we're only allowing whatever, fifteen in fourth grade, because our staffing, right, we, we get more than that, and we're just gonna research staffing, face problems, and like the first year or two, we tried doing that. And, and, and that's fine if we don't have a, a virtual charter school, but because we had such an expanding charter school virtual, when you do that, it does not allow you to accept any students between now and July one, I believe it is. So you can see that created a real problem, like we couldn't accept anybody, because we said, oh, we're limiting it for next year, and they said, well, if you're limited for next year, you gotta stop it now. And that was counterintuitive to everything we were trying to do with the expansion of our virtual schools, so. We stopped three years ago, maybe, limiting seats and just kept it open, with a caveat, like, that we can deny some students, and I'll let maybe Leah speak that, I don't want her to speak for the causes, the DPI allows us certain reasons, like if we're not staffed, or we don't have that type of program, I, things like that, so. Leah, you wanna maybe, I'll turn it over to you and, and with your recommendation, maybe expand a little bit on what I was talking about.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Um, yeah, you, you said it right, Tim, that special ed, we can deny applications based on a programming and, you know, the hardship it would be based on the staff numbers we have present and those kinds of things, so we do have the ability to do that somewhat. But it would be my recommendation that we don't close special ed, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if we close or limit our seats for special ed, then it, it kinda carries over to Janet as well, and on top of that, I think, when we accept somebody in open enrollment, a lot of what we're getting right now is virtual kids, and we can, we can accept them, we're not necessarily accepting them into one building, we could we can, as long as we have space, we could offer them open enrollment into our face-to-face program versus virtual, but right now we've seen an increase in our special ed virtual students, and I think that's where sometimes we run into the ability to service them with some of those programs that like OTPT, those kinds of things, but we have the ability to accept or deny that they're based on criteria, so, at this point, I would say that my recommendation would be to leave special ed open enrollment open for next year. Questions?
No, I don't have any. Any questions from the board members?
So do we need a motion on that to accept the recommendation of administration for open enrollment?
Yes, cannot limit number of spaces.
Okay. Was that a motion, Scott?
Second.
Third.
Okay. A motion, Scott, second Deanne. Accept the administration recommendation of no open enrollment limits for special education at this time. All those, and any further discussion on the motion?
Oops.
You'd have to make two motions, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. This one, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so, at this point, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is determining the number of spaces available for regular education students for open enrollment for the purposes of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Make a motion that we do not limit open enrollment for regular education students for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Okay, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Your motion, Kirk, second Brian. To accept the administration recommendation and not place a limit spaces, number of spaces available to regular education students for open enrollment. Okay, with that, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next one is consideration of the final approval for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar. I don't believe there were any changes made to the calendar from the last time they viewed it, two weeks ago.
But I do want to ask the board for some direction here, with late developments, you know, getting feedback that of the four-day in-person school week, and possibly we had in discussions among the admin team, you know, how successful that is, and if so, you know, would we consider doing that next year again, if allowed, and number one, if allowed, number two, if not, would we extend the school year into the summer? So, I say all that with the point of, we are exploring options. So would the board prefer? It's not unusual, except actually, it's quite common that we approve a calendar, we come back and we have to change it later on. The board rather hold off a little bit and let the admin explore some of these and come back with some options, or you prefer to.
My recollection of the count, of the conversation last time was, we're approving this assuming COVID is under control, and if it's not, we have to revisit it, and then we take administration recommendations, that's how I remember it. And if it's under control, this is the calendar you presented for that.
We might explore it, even if it, it, it's because educationally sound, not necessarily COVID mitigation reasons, there are other, you know, benefits to it, we're exploring, that might be we wanna consider whether we have, we're past this pandemic or not.
In a post-COVID world, the DPI is gonna go back to normal, I would, and if they don't, then we have, then we can revisit this, that's my opinion, but.
You mean, you can, as far as the hours required, because right now.
Days required as well, I think.
I'm sorry, but that's, that's, that's the way.
But I think they'll do both.
But that's the way in which we can currently do our current Fridays off, right, is because of that, or the
Correct.
Not the relaxing of the rules, but the ability to.
DPI, we have some.
And we're not extending the school year to meet our requirement, but I'm just saying, it is, it is possible that we continue with a four-day in-person week and extend the school year, you know, like say into June or, you know, for example, and meet DPI requirements. Or DPI might change requirements, and what is, what is, you know, hours of instruction too, in person or virtual, you know, so there's lots of variables.
Right.
Again, my point is, we're just exploring it at this point, it's recent development. And, and, and I'm fine, we could approve this one, because we've made changes to the calendar, well, as soon as, as late as, you know, some month or so. But just thought I'd throw that out there and ask for your direct advice.
I guess that's kind of, my thought is that, you know, we approach the calendar as if it's gonna be a quote-unquote normal year, and make changes as we need to, as we've done this year.
Right, well, and I, I think, so, in honoring parents and the fact that five-day work weeks and five-day school weeks are coincidental, and there's a lot of reasons for it, and there was a lot of disruption by COVID, I would say we have to be extremely compelling argument for me to consider changing from traditional.
And if we were, it'd be staff survey, student survey, parents, certainly, we, we'd ask, of course, and input and just to gather information. I'm, I'm comfortable with this move forward to being this, assuming, you know, we stick with this, but if you're okay with us just exploring other options, just here and there. And the reason we published this so early is because families do, right, they wanna make plans for next year, some of them have to take vacation days early, and they wanna know what kind of winter, spring break is, and things like that. Okay.
I'm not really on the board then, so it's someone else's problem. I'm not really on the board then, so it's someone else's problem, but.
I make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is final approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar for four K.
No changes since the last.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Diane, second Brian, to approve the four K calendar as presented for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is final approval for the twenty twenty-one summer school calendar.
I know edits since the draft presented last meeting.
Okay. Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Diane, second David, approve the consideration and final approval of the summer school calendar for twenty twenty-one. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, the next is consideration of the administrative contract extension for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, as we were made aware of in December, that each of the administrator's contract has an automatic rollover provision unless we have decided not to roll over a specific contract. Our board has made it their policy to make this an affirmative motion that on the contract, rather than just let it automatically roll, that we are consenting to that, so.
Motion to approve the administrative contract extension rollover for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Motion Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Second David, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is options for the publication of the school board minutes. It was brought to my attention that in the last quarter, publishing meeting minutes in the Hudson Star Observer that the costs of getting the rather prohibitive, we spent almost five thousand dollars in a quarter to publish meeting minutes.
Six, six months.
Six months.
Seven months.
What's going on?
So.
I'll explain.
No. That's all they have price.
So with that, we were going to discuss if there are options available to us. And if you wanna go over those, Tim?
Yeah, as Howard mentioned, Pam put together exhibit thirteen K there, just under five thousand dollars in the last six months. Hudson Star Observer, you know, has changed ownership a couple times and it costs subsequent change.
Bold and chapper.
And and
I read it.
Pam is very involved, obviously, with publishing all the minutes and the agendas, of course. And then noticed that increase and brought it to our attention, so we ran some numbers and you know, you can see that if there is no newspaper published in our district, which there is not any longer, the proceedings shall be posted or published as a school board direct, so we don't have to. So that's one question, do we have to? No, there's still class two, is it called? Class. There's some classes that we have to by law, but we do not have to do the minutes. So, for example, with the board, these regular board meeting months are more lengthy, right, and they're the most costly, the minutes. We still would do the agendas, but just as an example, a short, our last board meeting was short, just under three pages, was two hundred and twenty-five dollars to publish in a paper. You know, one wonders how many people are actually reading the minutes in the paper, so we still.
Who gets the paper?
I would. I would recommend, you know, that we forego this. And we still would publish them in our website and we still email them all to the staff. Unapproved, right, even, we talked about this earlier, and then, of course, we post the approved ones. We still have to do some agendas, regular agendas, in, but not committee meetings, not board learning meetings, et cetera. So we would not, if we stopped doing this, we wouldn't necessarily save ten thousand dollars a year, but it would be a significant part of that, you know, rough estimates of, you know, eight thousand. And additionally, many of you remember, we, part of the budget cuts a while back, we, we forego or stopped the Christmas ham and turkey thing, and I thought I, this would be money that we could reallocate for staff Christmas and or hams, or even this year, we just do a Easter ham. I think this year, more than ever, it would be appreciated. So I just think that would be a trade-off and then we still would come out ahead, because the, the last time we did that was about
Forty-five hundred?
I wanna say forty-five hundred, I said, yeah.
That doesn't seem terribly secular of us.
Secular.
You know, I'm like giving out.
Well, holiday.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Spring.
Staff appreciation meet.
Okay, that sounds worse.
Meet, meet and greet, M-E-A-T.
It's, you know, it's, it's one of those things that really set us to see apart in our culture, it's just, it's just really aligned to our our culture of valuing staff and it's.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say Christianity.
That's my whole point, and I think that should be a little bit more secular, I can support the cause.
And the two don't have to be tied together, we stop publishing, we have, I, I, that was just, would be my suggestion.
Do we? I know because we publish, we're probably not obligated, but do we post in public places, post office or, or the town halls or the libraries or anything?
For the agendas or for the minutes?
Any?
The agendas we do in all three buildings and the district office, the website, I send it to any of the reporters that want it, so there's three of those that I send it to. Yeah, we really cover our bases on that.
Okay, thanks.
And then I was just gonna point out, if you notice on this, it says proceeding to the school board meeting must be published within forty-five days after the meeting. So I thought that was kind of interesting, going back to.
David's phones.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a total waste of money.
Yeah.
I mean, considering we don't have to do it and it's likely almost now.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, when I, when I, notice showed up here a lot though. You know, it's.
Circumcision.
You know, when we were talking a few hundred dollars and we had local newspaper and even Richmond, a lot of people subscribing to that and following school district news, I could see it, but I think the costs are starting to get out of hand. I don't think we're seeing a return. I don't think we're seeing a return anymore.
Yeah.
I think we've got cheaper ways to do it. Okay.
Are we gonna start up again with the posters? What's that? Are we still doing the posters?
Did you make a motion?
I mean.
Bring them right now, no. Because I would, I would say if we just continue doing those, the putting a link on there to the website that has the the minutes and stuff on there, we can cover ourselves that way by suddenly even noticing that this, if you're interested, because we got people like, we're talking to David, I wanna see him. Here's how you can see him.
Yeah, it's just, it's gonna have to be, uh, you know, I don't know if it's a different link every month, but it's gonna have to be almost like a tiny URL, something short. You know, so they're not typing eighty, ninety, one hundred characters, you know, into their address bar. You know, Pam, I don't know if we're sending the meetings out, the, the minutes out to staff. Is there a way possibly that we could get the public to sign up to get that email? You know, they can just enter their email address if they want and it's emailed, you know, within a certain amount of time after the meetings or once they're approved or whatever is decided, but I mean, that way people can sign up for it if they'd like to as well.
I, I think you're asking them to go, go, go get it if they want it, I think, is the same as going and buying a paper or subscribing to the paper. And I, I hear what you're saying on that, but I just.
Yeah, you, if you wanna see, you do have to work a little bit to follow up for what's going on.
I mean, you have to Google St. Chris Central School Board Agenda in order to find it. Is that too much to ask?
No.
You know, I mean, you are gonna have to type all those words into Google to find it, to get to the webpage where there's gonna be a link for it.
That's too much, then you're not very serious about following it, right?
Well, I mean, are they posted in public?
I mean, I don't wanna be, I mean, I don't wanna be open and.
Yeah, they're in the school and they just heard about it too, so they could come here if they.
Right? People can find it.
It's super easy. Yeah. If you wanted a couple of minutes.
And Tyler, this is, is an issue, but.
Right.
It's not instant. We're not Amazon, we can't deliver it tomorrow.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discontinue publishing the meeting minutes in Hudson Star Observer. Except those unnecessary to publish.
I seconded it. I don't know if you heard me.
Yeah.
Okay.
So with that, is there any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Is there any other business we need to bring before the board at this time?
Um, just gonna ask them, kind of open meeting, I mean, considering all the other stuff, we're kind of opening up some things, right? Do we wanna open up like a number of, like, certain number of people that could come?
Physical seats?
Yeah, like eight, six, eight, so I don't, I don't know.
Is nobody allowed to come even if they wanted to?
Well, that's what we're saying. Yes, we're, we're asking you to join virtually. David had asked that too.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up again, like, do we wanna open it up for a certain number? And it might be first come, first served or something like that. I don't know what that looks like exactly, but it just feels like with everything else we're opening up, that, that would alleviate some of those concerns, not just even about the minutes, but like, okay, we're, we're we're expanding the offering, we can put eight, six, seven, whatever it would be.
We'll probably get the same number that we had before COVID.
I mean, I came to a few, right, and it was, you said there was a whole bunch of people, one time I came and I think we had like six.
Yeah, that was a big crowd.
Yeah.
Unless there's some presentation.
Well, there were eight kids and then six other people. And Mr. Green was one of them.
Been many years since we had the crowds of eighty and a hundred, so.
But yeah, I would say first come, first served. We can, we can be the make keepers on, you know.
Yeah, I'm wondering how we post that or how we avoid that.
Limit, limited seating of public welcome, limited seating.
Available.
First, first six or first eight, or whatever it is, you know.
So. I don't have a problem with that. I guess I haven't had the fear of COVID. I'm hoping that I'll be starting to have less fear even at the end of this week.
Man, you're getting.
Oh, you're getting access?
He's getting a shot.
Oh, right, microchopper.
Microchopper, like tracking.
Whatever, it goes very scary.
That's my favorite. I mean, how would they ever track you?
Why would they?
Man, I got.
Yeah, right.
You're saying.
If they wanna know anything about my life, I need to track.
So yeah, just open it up to the system.
Okay, is there any other?
Do you wanna put on Scott's little thing that you said about open seating? Do you wanna put a number on that on the agendas?
I would say yes. You put a first come, first served maximum.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
I mean, then that'll help the people that David's talking to, the people that they can't get connected or whatever, and then we're, you know, we're being we're accommodating.
Starting with next Monday? Right? I don't worry about it.
Yeah.
We gotta have a meeting next Monday?
I mean, if somebody actually would show up.
This has been a crazy time, but yes, there is a meeting regularly scheduled that Monday.
Next Monday?
Because it was second or.
All right. And, you know, depending on what the agenda is, we could it's the board learning meeting, we could not have that if there's not an agenda, if there is, that's fine. But we had some three Mondays in a row with some meeting, there might not be anything to cover on.
We'll, we'll see how it goes. I think we probably have some things we'll have to deal with.
Well, can't you get, catch a drift here, Howard?
I was being pretty subtle.
Say virtual.
Maybe you could figure that out.
Howard doesn't do so.
Jesus.
I'm subtle like a brick.
It's about how subtle I was.
No, really, a little.
David, it's your time.
No, I don't know.
We have, we have important upcoming dates. We've got a meeting next Monday, regular meeting scheduled for February fifteenth.
Tentatively.
Bring chocolates.
So I don't know if there's any other important dates that we have to consider. Right now, we're looking at, trying to get some answers from our design build contractors. Maybe get some proposals and we may have to do meeting for that. So we will consider what we have to do and make arrangements accordingly, so. It means we have to move a meeting. We will do that. So with that, are there any other dates? In other words, all in the same motion to adjourn, Darren.
Come on.
Dave.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Bye.
Thank you all.
Bye.